We're ready to go now.
Thanks. So, good evening, everyone. It is about 6:05 PM and we are calling to order the school committee meeting of January 10th, 2023. Welcome to 2023, everyone. We have a short meeting this evening after public comment and superintendent and chair reports. We have a quick consent agenda item. We have a Lynch building project update followed by an FY '24 budget development update. We do anticipate our next meeting to be next Tuesday night. It is budget development season, so it will be January 17th at the same time here, then January 24th, followed by a public hearing on January 31st. Following that, we'll have an executive session for purpose two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-unit administrative personnel because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and we will adjourn directly from the executive session. I would start with public comment this evening. There does not appear to be anybody here for public comments, so we will move right into the agenda tonight. Dr. Hackett, did you have any remarks?
I'm gonna, I'll save my remarks because I'm sure some of you might have some remarks about the weekend and how all things went, so I'll.
And I will start with that. I just wanted to thank Elizabeth Mooney and Carolyn Otis for their hard work on the Get Out the Vote campaign for the new Lynch School. The Lynch debt exclusion override passed overwhelmingly with 82% of the voters voting yes. Question two also passed, so we look forward to the results of that one as well. And prior to the election, the select board had consensus to use question two for debt service to cover improving traffic safety around the new Lynch Elementary School and potentially for a school roof replacement project as well. Ultimately, the select board will bring the projects from question two to town meeting for funding and we are very excited and thankful to the Winchester community for supporting the new Lynch Elementary School. As we have seen here at this table and we'll see her again this evening, the plans for the new elementary school are really exciting in terms of the sighting and allowing kids access to nature and new play areas and it has been long awaited and anticipated in this community to be able to replace Lynch Elementary and we would just like to thank the voters of Winchester for supporting that. I'd like to give Mr. Nixon, Mr. Hopcroft, an opportunity if you'd like to jump in as our EFPPC rep, Mr. Nixon.
Well, there's other really good news. If, Dr. Hackett, do you care to pull up the Lynch 2025 website?
I would love to.
I was waiting for you, Mr. Nixon.
So we can talk some dollars and cents.
And do you want to talk about this now, Mr. Nixon, or when we do the Lynch project update?
Totally up to you.
Why don't we get through that, because I've got some other remarks and we will talk about that when we get there. Did you have any, any thanks or anything right now?
I'll save it.
Okay. Mr. Hopcraft?
I would just, you know, thank Elizabeth and Caroline and Reagan and all the people who worked on the committee to, to help get out the word about the, the vote. That was great and I thank the people of Winchester for moving forward on this. And lastly, remind people that there's a lot of illness going around, so, you know, wear a mask, keep some distance, et cetera, and that's it.
Any other members at this time? I know that you're all, we're all thankful, so I speak on behalf of us all when I thank the community. School committee was also notified that the MAS C Board of Directors voted to support major changes to circuit breaker reimbursement at the rate of 90%, up from the current 75%. I am not asking us to vote on this tonight, but the finance subcommittee has voted in advance of this notification to work with the superintendent to draft just such a recommendation to our state legislatures. I would like to have the consensus of the board tonight, knowing the communication is sitting at your seat and that we had intended to draft something similar as well, that if the board supports this effort, that I can sign the communication to our legislatures on increasing the reimbursement rate of circuit breaker on behalf of the committee instead of just the finance subcommittee.
So I have some questions.
Go right ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Dr. Hackett, has MAS S discussed this as well?
It's been in discussion. They have not taken official position on it, as far as I know, but this has been a joint effort between MAS C and MAS S.
Do you know if there's timing for MAS S to take this up as a body?
I am not aware, as I am not tapped into MAS, MAS S, because people don't let me leave here. I don't get out of Winchester often, so I, I can check on that, though, just to see if there's a, a timeline for, or, or what the position they would take would be.
So I, I raise it, Madam Chair, only because unless it's super time sensitive, you know, knowing how these two organizations work together, I'm, and usually take a joint position on something like this.
Right.
I would expect MAS S would probably be favorable towards this, but might actually have something either else to add or something to consider that we just don't yet see.
I think there is.
I mean, I'm generally with this, but I might feel more comfortable, because absent this, I would certainly look to our superintendent and say, "Do you have a recommendation?" But thi- this is coming from, you know, statewide bodies and I'd be very interested in what may be happening at MAS S in this regard.
The finance subcommittee did feel like there was a sense of urgency around getting this message out sooner rather than later, as we are all in the midst of budget season. And as we are in a little bit, this could dramatically impact particularly our school budget. So we had intended to draft our own letter that actually looked, looked very similar to this. We had voted last Friday to do that prior to this letter coming out. At our last meeting. And then this letter came out, which seemed to support our position as well. Finance Subcommittee is, I mean, Finance Committee is actually asked to sign on to it, too. Mr. Brady?
Thank you. I, I would certainly support it wholeheartedly and I think we should support it now and I just go one step further and say, "In my belief, it should be 100%," and I'll add on the caveat that the federal government should actually fund special education like they said they would when they passed the law over 30 years ago.
Right.
I always, I always like to remind, I like to remind people that the federal government fails in its obligation and it said it would fully fund special education and it never has, so, and that's been through a long time.
So may I jump on that and say that that's exactly kind of what was in the back of my mind, because MAS S might even take a stronger position.
Well, we can choose to take one ourselves, too.
And we could, but if we're gonna meet next week on Tuesday, can, is there an option for us to maybe just specifically ask Dr. Hackett to check in with Tom Scott and just see if anything's coming and if there's not, we can, you know, act on it?
I'll do one better. I'll text him right now. See if he's paying attention.
So.
I was going to say I'm in support of this.
So I just moved to postpone this until late, a little later in the meeting, but we'll come back to it.
Okay.
I was just going to say I'm in support of this and, and especially since it was discussed in watching the finance subcommittee meeting. And if the MAS C has already made this point as well, then if the MAS S also throws its hat in at a, at some point, then I think the more support, the better. But we can certainly start now, I would think.
Mr. Brady, I, I'm not, sorry, Mr. Hopcraft, I assume that you continue to be in support of this?
I support it.
Yeah. And we will come back to it when we talk about budget, hopefully, Mr. Nixon. Also, just wanted to notify committee members that at the select board meeting this weekend, we heard that the Finance Committee is presenting to the Capital Planning Committee tomorrow night, potentially on a new way to look at reviewing town capital needs across town. So if anyone is interested in hearing more about their proposal to the Capital Planning Committee tomorrow night, what time is that meeting, Mr. Nixon?
Well, I'll tell you, but I have a slightly different understanding from the chair. I understand that there are some suggestions from a couple of the FinCon liaisons to capital planning, so I don't know that it's actually a proposal from FinCon. I might be wrong on that, but that was my understanding. And we meet at seven.
Seven.
Yep.
So, so if you're interested in hearing more about that, they're, they have a proposal that they have put together, the two members, and will run through that with capital. The, per notification of the Director of Public Health and the Superintendent, there is a masking recommendation in schools until this Friday, following the return from winter break. And given the cold and flu season, as Mr. Hopcraft pointed out earlier, please know that students and staff are always welcome to wear masks, even beyond the 15th, to prevent illnesses or spread. And as always, if your kids are sick, please keep them home to protect themselves and others. So just a reminder through our cold and flu and COVID season. Just wanted to let, also let the committee members know that we do miss our student reps and they are aware of our meetings, but I wanted to give a quick shout out to them, because we know senior year can be particularly busy with academics and athletics and that they have been letting us know when they're unable to attend due to other commitments and that they do miss being here and let us know that they look forward to being back at the table as soon as they're able. But I just wanted to let you know, since we haven't seen them for a couple of meetings, what was up with them as well and let you know that we were in contact with them. And then, sorry, there's a lot today, but just, lastly, just a reminder that Monday, the 16th, is a day of remembrance for Dr. Martin Luther King and that there are a number of community service events in the area. And if you have some time on Monday and you'd like to give back, it is a great opportunity to do so. Please find an organization that you support and be able to use that as a day of community service, if you're able. Did any of the other members have anything you'd like to add?
Just one thought on the Lynch vote. 82% is, I think, pretty remarkable. I'd just be curious if we could do the research in terms of our last two projects, what percentage were supporting them and what, I imagine, we're trending in a very positive direction. I, I would guess that this was higher than the prior two, but I'd just be curious to know, but I don't know if we have that anywhere.
I bet Mr. Nixon has those numbers on the top of his head.
I'm happy to describe one apple in relation to another. Just comparing the two elementary schools, Mr. Brady, the VO vote passed by a ratio of three to two. There were about 5,000 votes, so the turnout was actually greater in 2011. The delta was about 905 votes. In this election, we actually had about around 100 fewer yes votes for Lynch. The difference was just the, the dramatically lower no turnout for Lynch. So again, just as a, as a representation of the actual vote on a percentage basis, you're quite right, it was much, much, much stronger. It's always difficult to compare one year to another, because weather can become a factor. But in fact, the Lynch, sorry, the VO vote was 13 years ago tomorrow. It was, and it was January and it was cold, but I don't have the high school numbers on the top of my head, but that, to me, it's also a very different animal, just because it, it obviously impacted the entire town and it was a lot more money. But I will go pull those numbers and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
But it was an overwhelming vote in favor of the high school as well.
Right.
Not that I remember the exact numbers, but it was very strong.
It was strong support, yeah. My recollection is that that is one of the reasons that the MSBA has always, we have always been a good partner, is that our town has overwhelmingly supported our building projects.
That's right. There was some concern early going in the, well, they didn't, I think, call it eligibility back in those days, but on the high school project, early on, there was some concern about whether, you know, Winchester would step up and support the high school. So we, we were very fortunate that they wanted to partner with us so quickly after VO. The only other comment I just wanted to make unrelated is with regard to one of our, our school committee reps, I believe L. O'Connor was, she got a shout out as a Fall 2022 All-Star for cheerleading.
She did, yes.
Congratulations to her.
Okay. Then we will move forward with our consent agenda item. In your packets, there was consideration of a gift to the schools in the amount of If anyone has any questions about that, I will take them. Otherwise, I will take a motion to accept that gift.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, if no questions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the vote passes, so we will move on to our report update and action items. The first one will be the Lynch Building Project. I believe we will have, yep, there he is. We have Mr. Hay with us virtually for this.
Good evening, Charlie. Can you hear us?
He's not muted anymore.
No, but my volume is off, so that's a problem. Okay. Now, now I, now we can hear you.
Can you hear us now? Can you hear us now?
I don't know if you can see me.
We can.
You can.
God, you look handsome tonight.
It's unfortunately been a while since I really looked handsome, but thank you anyway. Well, good evening and thanks for having me and congratulations to all of you for the exciting turnout of this weekend. It's great, great news. So, Dr. Hackett, you asked me to generally talk about sort of next steps and process, which is what I was prepared to do this afternoon.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, that there hasn't been much update to the slides since the committee last saw them, because they were pretty well vetted out for this portion of the, this, this phase of the project. So now that we're in a position to, to move forward from, with the town vote, I think it would be just really helpful if you could just kind of walk through timeline and challenges and whatever else you think would be important for us to know.
I'm happy to do that and I, I do have one image that if I can share my screen on this table, but if any of you would like to.
I'll let you, hold on. Okay, you should be set now.
So, the, the one thing I can share is a, can you see that? It's a, it's a kind of bar chart?
Yes.
Again, sure.
So, so what I was gonna just talk about is the next steps and Dr. Hackett is right. We have not developed kind of more design imagery or advanced the design too far since you last saw it, so it didn't seem to me that that was productive. I will say, however, that we have spent, so, so the EFPPC, I think, very intelligently advanced some money out of the feasibility study to fund the very early stages of what is the next phase is called design development. And that allowed TAPA to continue working in December. And while most of our work was fairly invisible, it was really vital, because what we needed to do is we needed to go back through the schematic design process is always a great rush for, for any architect. It's a lot of time pressure, there's a lot to do. We develop kind of a, a building model that, that becomes the basis of moving forward, but then that really needs to be cleaned up. It needs to be refined. We need to check and go back through all the square footages. We need to do a whole lot of work and we actually spent, have spent a very productive five weeks working on that and we've had a couple of people doing that over the course of the last five weeks. And we're a lot closer to having a building model that we can hand off to our consultants now and that we can now continue to work on the design. But in terms of process, if you look at this chart, this is what, this is, the MSBA asked us at the schematic design submission for a designer work plan, and so this was submitted as part of our schematic design submission at the end of the summer. And the, the, the blue, the, the, the chart shows you the end of 2022, which, if you can see my cursor is up there in kind of gray. It then shows 2023 in tan up there at the top, or whatever color you see it in. Sometimes it's different. But it, what we did is we submitted, as you know, at the end of the summer schematic design, we had a lot of outreach happening in the fall in order to, to achieve the, the exciting result you achieved this weekend. And then you see those stars, which include town meeting and ultimately the, the town vote in January. The, this ironically shows town, the, the ballot vote earlier, because when this was, when this went to print, which was back in, in August, the discussion was around having an earlier town meeting that, that got changed back to the January town meeting. However, this purple bar represents what I was talking to you about, which was design development, and that's a pretty accurate depiction of where we are. So we're now in January. We've spent a month on design development. We will now spend a couple more months on design development. That, that phase is really to flesh out the design and probably what is most mission critical about this phase is going to be doing circling back around with faculty and staff and having another set of programming meetings. And I know we've talked in the past about the initial programming meetings with faculty and staff. This will be a second go around and this, we will have more detailed plans to share and we'll try to reach as many teachers as we can and who are available, as many staff members as we can who are available from the Lynch. And we'll go through the plans as we have them now, the furniture plans, and we will get feedback. And we typically see some changes in the plans from that process, because it, it often is in areas like adminis, places where there are a lot of different rooms that are adjacent, not in the, not in the major classrooms, but in the areas where there's a lot of rooms together, adjacent to one another, like administration, like special education. Areas where they say, people will say, "Well, that's really not how we work. We work this way," and we say, "Okay," and we, and we change things around. Then in terms of the kind of core classrooms and specialty classrooms, it tends to be more around, "Okay, here's your classroom. Do we have it laid out the way you expect it to be? Do we have kind of the right amount of storage? Do we have sinks in an appropriate location? How you teach?" And those kind of things. So that needs to happen. I need to, I need to huddle up with Dr. Hackett and we need to decide on what a logical time to target is to, to access teachers. And it'll probably be working around the February break, so it'll either be in front of the February break or behind it. My kind of private, secret hope is me doing in front of the February break, but we'll have to see if that's possible. And from that process, we will have more refined plans. And during this period, we'll also be working hard with our engineers and consultants to kind of further refine systems. And we actually have a systems meeting coming up with EFPPC to just confirm that we're on the right track for, for, you know, heating and ventilating and plumbing and electrical. We will be working on our sustainability goals and making sure that we're refining the building envelope and the like, as well as our site planners, both, both landscape and civil, will be further developing the plans. That will probably also require programming meetings to, to further vet kind of how we've laid out playgrounds and how kids will play and be outdoors. If the, so, so then probably by the end of March, we will have prepared, sort of by, by early March, we will have prepared a set of documents that will go to cost estimators and will go to our cost estimator and they will go to the owner's project manager's cost estimator. Those estimates will be done in parallel. We will reconcile those estimates and by the end of March or the beginning of April, we will have a more refined design, both for site and for building, and we will have a new take on the estimate, on the cost of the project. So a refreshed estimate, which will reflect current dollars, current construction climate, and of course, more developed plans. So that gets us to the spring. All goes well, that goes to the MSBA. We know we're within budget. We, we're satisfied ourselves that we programmatically have the building fairly, fairly correct in terms of how it operates. We then launch it, construction documents, and that's really where we developed the, we developed the, and many of you are veterans of other projects, so you know all this, including the high school, which wasn't long ago. But we then have a fairly long construction documents period where we will be developing the full set of bid documents along with our consultant team. Of course, during this period, there's a lot of this stuff that goes on. We're gonna be having, having the school meet with security consultants. Will involve a hardware consultant. We will have various other kind of specialty consultants who be, be getting layered and as we go along. The sustainability piece will continue to be fully developed. We will do a 60% cost estimate in the summer as a cost check. The MSBA requires that. They also ask for a 60% submission to them. It gives them an update on where we are. We'll then work to a 90% submission in the fall. And in parallel to that, we will get going on site permitting, because as we all know, everyone on this call knows and you all in person know, the Lynch site has got a lot of regulatory issues and so we're gonna be submitting to Conservation Commission and having at least a hearing and I'm sure more with feedback from them that, that our team will have to respond to. So that will happen probably in the, in the split spring, early summer, and we hope to have the permitting wrapped up by midsummer. And we also, I'm sure, will have some planning review and site plan review. And of course, we will also be getting the, the input of the town, a regulatory, a input of the town, regulatory agencies, but also just operationally getting the input of the town. So we're going to talk again to first responders, police, fire. We'll be talking again, I'm sure, multiple times to Department of Public Works and Engineering. We will be talking to authorities of every jurisdiction, so Building Committee, excuse me, Building Department and the like. And if all goes well, we should then get to the end of this fairly complex road by the fall. We intend to be bidding by mid-September. We hope to have bids back by late October. And that means hopefully, if we get the right kind of bids, which we expect we will, we should have a contractor on board before Thanksgiving, which means they can mobilize in December and hit the ground running either in December or January. And then, as we all know, the, the goal at the end of the rainbow is to have the students back at the Lynch by the beginning of the school, full school year in 2025. And then, of course, in parallel to all that, we're also, we're very close, which is exciting, and you all may be talking about that separately. We're very close to approving a contract for a modular contractor who we think is going to, who is on budget and on the budget and is established for that cost and is fairly reassuring about being able to deliver modulators to the Parkhurst and being ready for this upcoming fall school year for kiddos to be moved off the Lynch site and over to the Parkhurst. We are also working on a separate bid package for Parkhurst improvements, which is not a big, not a big job, but it is an important job because we need to bring technology into some of the spaces that have not been being used for many years as classrooms. We need to get some paint on some of the walls. We need to have, we need to get co-compliance stair railings and various other sort of miscellaneous improvements. That's not a big job. It's a half a million dollars, but it will make a big difference to the kids next year. So that will also be going out to bid this fall, this spring. And the intent there is to have construction start maybe at the spring break. So that would be the April break. And that work happening in the spring and very early summer. So there's sort of three different efforts going on here, two, two at Parker's location, one at the Lynch. And so that is kind of the, that's kind of the schedule we're working to. And I may have shared that in too much detail or not enough detail. I'm not sure. But anyway, that's, that's what we're looking at. So we're mobilizing right now to proceed with that kind of schedule that I just showed you. And we're excited. That's what I got.
Perfect. Perfect amount of detail. Goldilocks zone.
Thank you, Mr. Hay.
I can't see you all. So I have no idea how many of you are sort of nodded off at this point.
None. None. You've lost, you've lost no one. Everyone's very excited about this. So it's great to be at this point.
You have us all with rapt attention. I'm going to take questions from the committee on anything Mr. Hay has presented here this evening. Does anybody have any questions about the process or decision making along the way in the next several months?
So I would only add, is, is good news to hear that there's a pretty good level of confidence that the modulators will be delivered in time for us to get Lynch students here at Parkhurst. Now that the project is passed and because I have many superstitions, I did not want to begin any conversations around planning outside of my office, anyway, for that, for that move until we knew for sure that the Lynch project was passed. You're going to see a little bit tonight, kind of a really high level overview of just some initial thinking around transportation as it relates to budget, as it relates to Lynch coming here. But we will begin the process of working with staff. I've already been asked several times, when can we get moving boxes? So Andrew Maron has been, is a really leading point on, on that coordination. We'll be bringing together Lynch administration and teachers. And we will also beginning, bringing together the, whatever members of the transition team we started with last year to begin conversations in full about things like transportation and what are some options, some potential groups' dos, and some potential different things for us to be able to get students here. And also with staff to really be thinking about the spaces here and how they want to use those. So we've done a lot of preliminary work on that that we've not shared. So now is the time for us to kind of roll that out and get feedback and input on it. So just, you know, that's a, obviously a major component of this.
Right. And we, of course, we, 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 the construction world, you never guarantee anything, and you never say never. But, you know, all we have is the, we had an encouraging conversation with a modular vendor. We, you know, of course, there's no guarantees. But they're seem, seem relatively confident and positive about it. So that was encouraging. It doesn't mean something couldn't go wrong. And of course, everyone on this call is in the business of adjusting and dealing with, with issues as they come along. You guys are good at it. So we'll, we'll deal with that if we have to. But it does seem fairly positive so far.
And these will be new modulators, not used.
Right.
Manufactured, not too far away.
Right. It's a retail company. It's a company that has a large presence in Massachusetts. And, and they did the mods for the Heisenburg, right?
That's right. Yes, they did.
And Mr. Nixon, my understanding is that the modular units, so they're going to be here at Parkhurst, or create sort of a separate building of their own, that they have an interior hallway and intend to have bathrooms as part of those. So
That's right.
The students won't be needing to go between the Parkhurst building and, and their own classrooms for things like restrooms. They'll need to come use the cafeteria and gymnasium in the Parkhurst building.
I think that's largely correct. There will be an ADA accessible ramp, not like paved site work, but, but, you know, kind of an aluminum ramp to get from that upper parking lot down to those buildings. The mods themselves and how they connect to the existing site will be as they should, ADA accessible. So we're not quite ready yet to show what that looks like, but we're getting close. The EFPPC is going to hear the recommendation from the OPM on the preferred vendor. And I hope we'll be acting on that actually this week. And then I think in the next meeting or two, we'll probably be in a position where we can begin to show what that looks like. And at the same time, Charlie and his team are going to continue to work with Dr. Hackett and kind of defining and refining the scope of work here at Parkhurst. There, there were some things that were kind of left on the cutting room floor back in 2011. As Ms. Bollanese remembers, there were a lot of things we, we did well here at Parkhurst, but we couldn't do everything we wanted to out of some budget constraints. So this is an opportunity to go back and pick up some of those, those forgotten pieces, if you will. So I'm excited about that. If we can, before we lose Charlie, do you, can, can we just talk about the financing piece, Dr. Hackett? And if you pull that up, you don't mind pushing that in?
Well, he does that, Ms. Nixon. Can you remind me?
Is that?
Well, he does that. Can you just remind me, the, the mods are a lease?
They're leased, yes.
Yeah.
And, and they're not cheap. You pay a, let's see.
Sorry, I was still in control.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move. See, look at this. I'm taking over.
Very uncomfortable experience.
I'm moving Charlie. Charlie, we're moving your face all around. Okay, there we go. So there is a, there is an installation cost. There is the long-term lease cost. It's a 24-month minimum. And then there's actually a cost to remove them. And all in, it's a lot of money. But as Charlie said, it fortunately does come within the budget. There's also another interesting element of this, which is although we always kind of, we, we hope for things to kind of, kind of come in on schedule, we also like to have those planning contingency. What if, what if something gets delayed? So it's important that we have in the contract, some understanding of what's the expense if we need to actually keep them for a period of time. If, if we should hit some delay on the Lynch project, God forbid, you know, and we're not open in September, what is the cost of that? And so this, this group had a pretty favorable kind of lease extension rate if we needed to get another month or two of those. Again, we hope we don't have to do that, but it's good to know what that looks like. So what, what I wanted to just speak about here, which I, I'm, I'm not sure, have we actually officially discussed this at the school committee table?
No.
Dr. Hackett, we haven't. So the MSBA gave us a bit of a Christmas present on December 21st. So you, you will all remember from fall town meeting, there was concern about, you know, the increased costs and given the market that, that we have. And I think we had shared with town meeting that the MSBA had taken the really unprecedented step of suspending their accelerated repair program for this coming fiscal year, which then kind of unencumbers about $76 million. In fact, then what they did at their very next meeting on December 21st is they said, okay, we've got this money now. We're going to actually raise that, that cap on construction costs as the basis for reimbursement, not only for those projects that they were about to approve, but they were willing to go back to the previous meeting, which happened to include Winchester, because that was in October. So what they, they took, there was a limit on the reimbursement for construction. It was, I think, $360 a foot, Charlie. And, and so regardless of what your project costs, if you get, let's say, a 50% reimbursement rate, that was 50% of $360 a foot. They raised that to $432 a foot. They also made a small but helpful increase on eligible site expenses, some other adjustments for designer reimbursement, like Charlie's team and the OPM. This does not change the overall project budget, nor does it change that 36.21% reimbursement rate. Because that rate is the percentage of reimbursement of eligible expenses. What the MSBA did on December 21st is they sort of redefined what an eligible expense is. And so at the end of the day, and so this has all been updated on the website that explains their decision, because they raised that cap, it, it means we get $2.88 million in additional reimbursement when we talk about the maximum facilities grant. So not only what is in the base project, but there are some eligible costs that we carry under contingencies. Now, if we don't actually use those contingencies, then there's obviously no reimbursement. But we could see nearly $2.9 million in additional reimbursement. And so what I've highlighted here is what, what's the effect of that? It means our net project cost now comes down to somewhere between 74 to 74 and a half million dollars. You'll remember previously, it was above $77 million. And so what I also appreciate is that management went back to Hilltop, who's our consultant for, you know, municipal bonding, and taking that into account, made a little minor adjustment here. So, so this does reflect that slightly lower cost in terms of the tax impact per hundred thousand dollars. So it's good news. As I said, it doesn't affect the overall project budget. And so, you know, the concern that I think certainly some members of the EFPPC have, which is, you know, what happens if a project comes in over budget? That's still on us and Charlie and his team as we get those periodic reconciled cost estimates, right? Because we need to do things along the way to be sure that it's going to come in on budget. So that's the, maybe the important thing for people to understand. The MSBA did not increase the project budget. They're sort of just increasing the reimbursement that they're going to give us, which is great. We appreciate that. But those are two very different things. Is that, is that fair description, Charlie?
I read his, read his lips. He said yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So anyway, this has been updated, and we will continue to update the project website, you know, moving forward. That was always the plan. I'll remind folks, the FAQ page is here. We have gotten a couple of other questions that have come in, some good questions about, about security planning that Charlie and his team are doing with Frank and Andrew and the, the staff at Lynch. And so we, you know, made every effort to, to respond to that. And, you know, as, as Charlie and his team pull together other imagery that we can share, we will do so. So that's it.
I had a quick question for you, Dr. Hackett, or maybe Charlie, too. Charlie mentioned that, that in this design development phase, that there'll be faculty and staff program meetings. At some point, will there be another meeting with Lynch parents and the community? They mentioned a lot of things that affect, you know, the children, obviously, the whole building affects the children, but children and families, like playgrounds and landscaping, and perhaps the way people approach the building and things like that. Will there be another opportunity for the community to weigh in in this phase?
So I'll, I mean, I'll let Chris speak to it. I mean, there are a couple of ways to do that, either through the FPPC, which is kind of what we have been doing. But for us to also to do, for superintendent administration to do faculty and parent meetings at the school.
Right.
It's a little bit more intimate. It's not quite as formal. You know, and I think we have a pretty good handle on what the design's kind of looking like and being able to get the feedback. So the short answer is yes. There's no question over the course of the next several months. And then as we go into fall, there'll be opportunities for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that will be, there will be a question from people of how they have the opportunity to weigh in. Mr. Hopcroft, I see.
I'd love to just build on that question. And I'm just curious if there might be any design options as you prepare the temporary space here at the Parkhurst. I know a lot of parents have had questions about where playgrounds and things like that might be. And maybe there's only one option, and there isn't enough room to move them around. But wondering if there might be any input of, you know, hey, we could do this or do that?
So the transition team that we pulled together last spring, that unlike any committee I've ever brought together, said, we don't need to meet anymore until we know more answers. We're gonna, we're gonna bring that group back together and whomever else might want to join that. And that's exactly the work that they'll be doing is, you know, let's look at all the elements of Parkhurst in this transition to and back, and then let's look at, you know, how is this facility going to accommodate the program? And that we already have, I mean, Charlie and his team have done a nice job kind of laying out generally schematically where things would be in relation. I'm sure there'll be a little bit more work around that. The, the options are somewhat limited, but we still have some options as to how we think about the space. One of the things that we've been talking about, and Mr. Nixon and I have been talking about, and actually the chair has been talking about, every, all of them have been looking out the back of my window in my office at that, that slope and also a set of steps that comes up from what is?
Emerson.
Emerson Road.
Emerson Road, thinking about queuing traffic and parent drop off, and how can we really limit the impact on this street, which is why my
Andrews.
Thank you, Andrews. Not created enough. So that we can think about getting kids in and out. We obviously, we're going to talk about transportation tonight. We're going to talk about busing specifically. But we also recognize that, you know, not every parent's going to choose an option of, of having their student on a bus. So, and it's a confined site. So that group will have a chance to have input in all of that. And then we'll be bringing people in along the way. Obviously, they have expertise from public safety to others on some of those discussions.
Can I just throw out a crazy thought that crossed my mind? I know, I recognize it's crazy. But given that we have the hill grade right next to these, you know, I don't know how, eight modulators, something of that nature, a bunch of modulators, could you ever use the roof of the modulators? Could you build, you know, play space up there, have a artificial grass fenced in, et cetera? It seems it's a large, flat space. Just throwing it out there. You don't need an answer now.
I've never seen it done.
Okay.
So you're talking about the roof of the modulators?
Yeah, if you have a big giant.
So they're not flat because they have to shed water?
Ah, okay.
So they are pitched.
Okay.
Not pitched like your roof or mine, but they're pitched.
It's not like a green roof or anything. Anyway, we can let you go there.
Could be a good start for a slide, a sled, sledding.
Just looking for space.
Yeah.
Can I just chime in, though, related, since Dr. Hackett brought up, you're looking at the back, looking at sidewalks, doing a large part, just do a lot of hard work between the district, former superintendent and DPW. When we built VO, we actually then put in sidewalks on both sides of Johnson Road. Prior to VO opening in 2013, we only had a sidewalk on one side. So that, of course, accompanied a big redistricting of Winchester. It was important for, for kids to have a safe way to get to school. So that's another part of the conversation that Dr. Hackett and I have had, which is, are there sidewalks where we need them? Are there sidewalks that maybe need to be rebuilt, resurfaced? I mean, the one behind us on Emerson Road is in, there's one there, but it's in really lousy shape because it's effectively been abandoned. None of that was even used during VO. That dates back to 2004, when the Ambrose kids were here. But there's still some relatively sound infrastructure back there, along with concrete steps and access to the building at the lower level. We can have conversations about crosswalks as well, about how you get from one sidewalk to another. There's a longer gestation period for that. You know, that's not as sort of as critical path as, frankly, the modulators are super critical right now. And that's, that's what's so important. We heard from all of the contractors who presented to us this week is they're doing their best to reserve time for manufacturing. But to meet the schedule, we got to make a decision and go. So it's going to be a little bit like just-in-time delivery for a while on, on this site.
Or white knuckle, some say. Some would call it white knuckle.
Yeah.
Just in time.
Right. Right. It's one more minute. They've almost put it down.
The impressive thing, too, I would just say, is it only The impressive thing, too, I would just say, is it only takes three days to get the modulators, like literally here, when they arrive, it takes three days to get them in place, connected, and weather tight, which is not a lot of time. But what takes much more time is, you know, working, for instance, with Eversource, getting a pole, getting a transformer, because we don't have adequate power on-site right now for these modulators. And as Bergstrom and a few others remember, there, we had some delays associated with the elevator project, because we had delays on a transformer from Eversource. Transformers are hard to get right now, there's a used transformer market. So, that's something I think we're all beginning to, you know, get a little concerned about. So, the building showing up and getting placed and getting sealed up is one thing, but it's all the mechanical, electrical, you know, the plumbing, that's really what takes a lot of time. Yeah. White knuckles.
And to your question, Mr. Hopcroft, there is another playground back down there, down that way, too, so, that's what also makes that site...
Another what?
There's another playground back down below.
Yeah, with the San Andreas Fault running through it, but yes.
Right, yes, currently.
Kind of bumpy.
But speaking to improvements, Mr. Nixon, and getting students on-site and other places, utilizing the space to the maximum capacity, there are other improvements that can be made to, besides the root modules.
Yeah. I know the after-school program doesn't have enough room to be here, and so I know it's a tight space.
It is, yeah. And then my only other question was, just a quick one, Mr. Hay mentioned a number of consultants, security hardware, specialty sustainability consultants that will be brought in. Well, I assume most of them will be working directly with EFPBC and the superintendent. Well, sustainability was mentioned a couple of times. Is that through the sustainability committee?
They are all subconsultants that work under Charlie's direction, but they do meet with EFPBC, or in some cases, the subcommittee. One of the roles of the architect is they're sort of the conductor of the project. And so, although Charlie is not himself a mechanical or electrical engineer, it's part of what you learn about in architecture school, and it's his responsibility to kind of coordinate all of that, and that's also the case for, you know, the sustainability consultant with whom they've worked before, on many projects, actually. So, they, from time to time, will present to the EFPBC, sometimes to the subcommittee.
I guess, and sustainability was one area that I was particularly interested in, because I heard a lot of parents, as we were talking to people, particularly on Voting Day, excited about Lynch being a net-zero building. And so, I was wondering if that consultant was going to, would be the one working with the sustainability subcommittee to reach that goal? Is that how that's going to be accomplished, is that, who's responsible for that?
Well, I'm going to let Charlie jump in. What I would remind folks is the sustainability subcommittee exists just basically to make recommendations to the EFPBC. So, the EFPBC looks at everything. Sustainability is, you know, I would never suggest it's like an add-on. I mean, to me, it's intrinsic in so many, it's not just intrinsic to the design of the building, it even extends to how we operate the building. So, the subcommittee will make certain limited recommendations to the EFPBC, but the EFPBC has working groups on many elements of the building, where they get discussed as we sort of go through the various processes, as the drawings get developed, as the specs get developed, and as the costs get developed. But I think as we move forward, the project comes more and more into focus. I mean, Charlie, anything you want to add about kind of the role that Magda plays and sort of how she engages with you and your engineers?
She, yeah, she does work for us. So, TAP-A kind of is responsible for all aspects of the design. Your contract is not with anyone other than the architect. So, anyone we bring to the process, other than reimbursable consultants, things like survey or something like that, which is sort of an outlier, because it's a testing thing. Generally speaking, the consulting engineers, the consultants, they work through TAP-A. The sustainability stuff is kind of really fundamental. I mean, in a lot of ways, it's maybe simpler than people think it is. It's embedded in the architecture, it's embedded in the process. Once we know what the parameters are and the mission is of the community and of the user, we kind of know what we need to, we go, we sort of know what we need to do to then achieve that. So, we know what the goals are already, and we've known them since schematic design. So, it's our job now to go deliver to you a building that's going to perform that way. And really, we know how, we think we know how we're going to achieve what we need to achieve, we've set out the parameters that we need to get to, and really fundamentally, the only big decision, the only really big decision left, is not just sort of nibbling around the edges of all this, is going to be, how are we going to procure solar panels, right? Because we're dependent, of any kind of building that's highly efficient and has a goal of very little energy use, is going to need to generate energy on-site. And so, the decision has been made to do that through photovoltaics. But they aren't necessarily all going to be purchased as part of the project, they may very well be through a power purchase agreement. So, that's really the only piece left that needs to be hatched out, but there are two clear pathways forward. The more likely one, because the, what Winchester's done this way in the past, and frankly, we don't think we necessarily have the capital budget within, kind of built into the project is the PVs, so it's quite likely you'll have a power purchase agreement in hand. But beyond that, we're already in a pretty good place in terms of sustainability, and we think we know what our mission is, and we have a clear path to get there. But most of it really is embedded in things like how we build the walls and what kind of windows we use, and these kind of things, what kind of fixtures we use, what kind of lighting we use, what kind of plumbing we use, and those kind of things. So, that's all, and obviously, the mechanical systems are, we're already designing to essentially the most efficient mechanical system there is, so.
Great, thank you.
I think we're good plans.
Go ahead, Mr. Hopcroft.
If I can just further clarify what I think I heard, but whether it's through PVs on the building, well, whether we buy them or we get them through a power purchase agreement, the goal is that, in the end, the building will operate in a net-zero fashion, barring something major going wrong that we would hear about beforehand. However you get there, the building would generate all of its energy on-site, right? Is that what I heard?
Goal is a net-zero building.
That's the goal. You will not know whether it's net-zero for a year or two, right?
Okay.
Because all we can, we can design to a series of parameters, but it's going to be, if it is in net-zero, it's going to be really, really close to net-zero.
Okay, but if it...
So, you don't want to have a litmus test. You don't want to have, you know, what you need to do is agree that we're going to do our best to get there, and that we expect to get there. But it's a lot to do with how the building, use patterns of the building, and suddenly the building's use changes. I mean, there are all kinds of things that could possibly, you know, there's all kinds of variables in this, so that's all.
Can I just add, too? Andrew has done a good job in flagging for sustainability consultants, who I think has a good grasp of our operation of the building during the school year, how the building might be used during the summer. So, there, I don't want to say they're conflicting ideas here, but let me just be really clear that, as a community, I think we felt this way about VO, we felt this way about the high school, I heard support for this from the Lynch community. The idea that the Lynch Elementary School can be a resource to the community outside of school hours is seen as a generally positive thing. We have used the Lynch School over the summer, but if you're going to operate the building, you're going to be consuming more energy. Therefore, you need to be generating more energy. And so, one of the challenges, kind of really thinking long-term, okay, how are we actually going to use this building over the summer? Now, that's not a decision for the school committee to make, that's, I mean, to some degree, it's a, it's an administrative decision for what are strictly, you know, administrative needs, like EYP, for example. But what if it's not EYP? What if we're actually just renting the building out, because it's a revenue potential? So, these are conversations that have started, and that will just simply have to continue. The other thing I would just, two quick other points on solar, if I can, Mr. Hopcroft. So, and you can even find this on the project website. The roof will be loaded with solar panels. Charlie was clear from the very beginning that we could generate a lot of energy from solar, from roof-mounted PV, but he was doubtful that we could generate enough for this to be a net-zero project. So, we'd have to supplement with ground-mounted. So, there are several different sort of options that have been presented to the sustainability subcommittee that can get us there, meaning literally where those ground-mounted panels go, which is really important in terms of the pedestrian experience. You know, we want this to be a welcoming experience, right, coming into the building. And so, we've looked at some of those, there's an A, a B, and a C option. In fact, I think those were presented to the EFPBC two or three meetings ago. So, these are the kinds of things that, you know, the sustainability subcommittee wants to continue to look at with Charlie and his team. We've actually asked him to look on the north side of the building, is there an opportunity for some ground-mounted there as well? And they're looking at that. But at the end of the day, I think we'll get to a point where the subcommittee can say to the EFPBC, this is really the direction we'd like to take. But whether it's A, B, or C, the intention is those numbers are going to add up, so that we're generating what we're consuming, if you will, right, to operate the building. And then with respect to how we get those panels, again, I don't want Charlie to box himself into a spot here, we were very clear with him from the outset that power purchase agreements are, in fact, how we have brought panels to our buildings in Winchester. So, our presumption was it would be a power purchase agreement unless, you know, the school committee in particular felt strongly otherwise, because they are expensive. The cost for the design and the engineering of the structure of the ground-mounted canopies themselves actually can be incorporated into the cost of a power purchase agreement. So, some of the nuances of this right now include, for instance, trying to scope out, well, what kind of, let's say, excavation and conduit, for instance, for a ground-mounted canopy, do we want to put into the base project, I'm putting in air quotes, so, you know, that we would own? And then at what point do you draw a line and say, okay, from this point on, this is now like a design exercise, and it's important for us that Charlie and his team actually design those canopies, so that they don't look like they landed from another planet and have no design, you know, sort of relationship to the building, if you will? So, these are all the, you know, sort of the conversations that we're beginning to have. So, when Charlie says we need to figure out sort of how to procure them, it's not that we don't know, in fact, we've always assumed it would be a PPA. That doesn't, but the timing of that's important, because if that's the route we go, doesn't necessarily mean they're all going to be there and operating the day that the building opens up, because a PPA, as I think you remember from the VO and the high school, now we're working with a completely different contractor, right? So, it may take a while to get that done, we just don't know yet.
Yeah, I...
Go right ahead.
So, that's great, and, you know, to the extent we use our best efforts to design towards a net-zero building, to the extent we use a power purchase agreement, and it comes on a little bit later because of the timing of that different vendor, or whatever, I just want to make sure that we're, if we get to a point that, for some reason, people, you know, decide that this is no longer the goal, that we can't do the canopies, we can't do something, that that would come back to us before a decision is made to have the building not be as close to, you know, net-zero operations, once, you know, factoring in the summer use, the winter use, you know, the fact that we can only do our best estimate and, you know, but design it to be that. I just, there's a lot of different committees and other people involved that could say at some point, oh gee, you know, canopies no longer make sense, it's too late to do, you know, ground, geothermal, you know, et cetera, so we're just not going to be net-zero anymore, but hey, we got ninety percent of the way there. I'd just like that to be flagged and come back to us before that happens.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Charlie? Just in, along that line, can you describe, is there a verification process, because you talked about, or has been mentioned, we don't really know if we're net-zero until we're in the building and we've lived the building for a period of time, from how we use it to how the systems work? I mean, I understand you designed to net-zero, but the actual, is there an actual verification process, like, that someone comes in with a stamp through and says, you've achieved net-zero, or some kind of commissioning, or how does that process, is there a process, I guess, to just start there?
I think it's based on use.
But is there, like, is there an authority who comes, yeah, like...
Is there a net-zero czar?
Yes.
So...
So...
No, it's not like lead, you get lead points based on lead, saying that you've done everything you've told them you would do.
Right.
And we're targeting lead gold, but that's going to be a different process. I don't think there's any kind of formal, and I could be wrong here, I mean, there is, you just look at the performance metrics.
Is it fair to say that a building could be, could achieve, and whatever that means, I'm also now using air quotes, net-zero, but the way in which it's used by a community or a school department brings in and out of net-zero at specific points in time during the course of a year?
Well, right, so there's an awful lot of lingo that gets thrown around with these things nowadays, and there's an awful lot of, there is, and sometimes misrepresentation, and there is sort of, you know, the fact is what, to be honest, what we try to do with all these projects is be net-zero ready. And net-zero ready means the building should be able to perform as a net-zero building if there's enough on-site energy generation. And of course, the wild card, of course, is this thing about, about are we generating enough based on use? So, sure, it could go in and out, it could be that part of the year is we're operating as net-zero, and part of it is not quite, is a slight deficit, and you're buying off the grid, that's a possibility. And there's also the way people, I think, spin some of the performance metrics, is it to their best interest, you know? But the fact of the matter is, we want to have a highly efficient building that is essentially generating the energy it uses. And I think when you get down to something that close, you know, I'd be really happy that you have a wildly efficient building that's doing what you set out for it to do.
So, I think what, thank you, Dr. Hack, for that clarification question, and Mr. Hay, and I just want to follow up with something Mr. Hopcroft asked, because I think it's a slightly different request, and I think it's one that's important, is that you said something earlier about the building being designed to be net-ready, net-zero ready, or designed to be net-zero was the phrase that you used, which I think mimics what the wishes of this committee, and I've heard from the select board and community members, is that all the things that we're doing, design it to be net-zero. And I think the request I heard from Mr. Hopcroft is if there are choices to be made along the way that would take it, that would diminish its ability to be designed to be net-zero, how would we hear about those choices? Like, if you had to choose, for example, a less expensive window, or to not put in the ground-mounted solar, that those kind of decisions would come back to this committee? Is that what you were asking, Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, essentially, and I'd just add to it also, there's an organization located in Massachusetts, in Western Mass, called Undaunted K-12, whose mission, oh, can you not hear that? There's an organization, Sarah Ross started in Western Mass, but fledgling, I guess, you know, national organization, they're here in California predominantly, called Undaunted K-12, whose mission is specifically, you know, getting school buildings to be built in net-zero. And so, well, there may not be a standard, there may be a best practice or an emerging best practice. She's worked with a lot of districts around the state, might be a good resource to find out how people design, decide, you know, where the parameters are on how it's designed and whatnot, but...
I can't imagine adding one more consultant or expert to this process. I mean, I, you know, I don't know.
I think people are going to have to believe that we understand what the mission is here.
Hundred percent agree. I want to say something really blunt. Air conditioning this school does not help us get to net-zero, because that takes energy. But we've said as a school committee, we don't want to repeat the mistake of Vincent Owen, right? We want to have comfortable spaces for instruction and learning in the cooling season. So, you can generate a lot of energy to offset what you're consuming, you can also make decisions to consume less energy. But we have said as a school committee, the building needs to be air-conditioned. So, I get a little uncomfortable, I mean, first of all, as far as I'm concerned, there is a hundred percent commitment for ground-mounted solar. There were some, I think, who were concerned that the community might see it as like unappealing or not aesthetic or something. The subcommittee supports it. Early on, I think we got unanimous support, Dr. Hack, from EFPBC. I've heard no concern from the EFPBC about ground-mounted. I've gotten no pushback from the Lynch community. So, my assumption is it's going to be there. Whether the actual panels are there on day one, I think will just depend upon how we pull off a PPA, and who with, and what the timing is, but my expectation is we'll be putting conduit in the ground, we'll be putting, we need to have a conversation with Charlie and his team about whether we're going to buy the footings, are we going to do the concrete footings, just to own that as well. concrete footings, just to own that as well? So, you know, when we talk about things like, well, what if we make a decision for cheaper windows, is that going to come back to the school committee? I think I have to wave a yellow flag and say, you know, to Charlie's earlier point, this is a very experienced team. They know Winchester, they've worked with us before, they're doing great work, you know, outside Winchester today, and they've got a very, very experienced consultant team. And if you visit the actual, the Lynch website, when you go to project team, if you actually click on some of the engineers that work with them, and I mention the engineers because so much of what the engineers are responsible for have a very meaningful impact on whether a building is net zero or not, it'll take you directly to a lot of their K-12 work. We really need to kind of trust the team that we have, and I do. And I, yeah.
Yeah. So, and I didn't mean to question the team in any way, I have full faith in the team. I actually think it's quite simple. We're designing a building to be net zero, once the stuff is up and running, and if something significantly changes where we think it's not going to be where we decide to make some major change in the project, where it's not going to land there, we would get some sort of proactive notice so that we can have a discussion about that. I'm not questioning, you know, the who does what, or where do you put, you know, conduit, or any of the details on how to do it. It's just if the mission changes, and a lot of times when we talk about the mission, it's not clear because we're not using language of, hey, we're building a net zero building. You know, there's a lot of, you know, and I get there may be nuance to that, but just, you know, we're designing, and I get designing it to be, I get that maybe people run the thing at, you know, 40 degrees inside, you know, all year round and run every, you know, source of energy in the building, and it's a really cloudy days, and so maybe something happens where we can't generate it. But there must, you know, I get the team knows how to design a building to be a net zero building. I get that the timing of when the panels, you know, whether we own them or not, could affect the timing of when the thing starts running. But if we change the plan and we're not going to be making a building that is designed to be net zero once all the panels are up and running, because there are a lot of people working on this, and there are a lot of experts, and there might be a lot of legitimate reasons why that might need to happen. I just want to know about it.
So I think, you know, I'll speak from some of my own experience. I mean, the only time I've ever seen the mission or the clear goals of the design of a building change is when you have bids that come in that are higher than what you anticipated. And then you're into a process of having to make some decisions around value engineering, and some of those decisions could have an impact on energy consumption and energy production. So I, you know, absent a significant, unanticipated process through the bid process that brings things in that are much higher than what Charlie and his team has put together as in being anticipated and the estimates that are being done along the way, I don't see there being the opportunity for the design itself being knocked off target. So if that's the question, which I think it is, because the goal is net zero, and I think that the team is clear about that, I do think people have made this, I do think that people have made this a little bit, have oversimplified the definition a little bit, in not understanding the whole scope of what goes into it. And while I've been to every single EFPPC meeting, I believe, I've never heard-
This is true, I will vouch for you.
-Charlie, or his team, or anybody on the EFPPC say anything differently than understanding that that is the goal. Of course, you know, there are, but they also understand at a deeper level, a more complex level than I understand, what that means. So, and I just think that people don't want to get pinned into saying, yes, 100%, we know we're going to hit this goal, when there are so many factors that can, that are involved in making that determination.
Yeah, and that's exactly my point.
Okay.
Is that there are a lot of variables.
Yep.
Maybe the materials come in and we can't afford it.
Right.
And maybe that's our decision, but maybe there's something that happens that isn't our decision, but I'd love to know about it if that happens.
Yep.
If something's going to, you know, because there are a lot of, I think, governance structures of who owns what pieces of all this kind of stuff, and I don't want to be out here talking about that we're building this net zero building if, in fact, something changed over here and we're not anymore. So it's really a, because I don't have that level of detail, because I rely on all the experts that we have that really do know this stuff, I just want to put on the record that I'd like to know if something changes in this. And it could be, you know, legitimately the cost of the materials, and, you know, now we can't afford to build the building, and we have to not do it this way, but I'd like that to come back to our table.
Well, and I think, you know, Chip Burksum's been really good about making sure, and probably Charlie doesn't want to hear this, but, I mean, Charlie, you've been at how many school committee so far this year? I mean, I don't know how many other school systems you work with where you show up at the full school committee meeting on a pretty regular basis, but, you know, you also know Winchester, so, you know, I don't see that changing through this process. And I can imagine that if there's something that comes along with one of these updates related to costs, or some kind of change that has to happen in design for whatever reason, that that would be brought to this table for discussion. I mean, ultimately, you know, this project is in the purview of the EFPPC. The school committee does have a lot of decision making around consumption that we can make. And to Mr. Nixon's point, I mean, you know, we run a pretty comprehensive summer program. We also know on either of the shoulder months of the school year, it can get pretty hot. So, you know, we have a lot of that stuff to balance, but I, yeah, I mean, I don't see, I think the communication has been good. I mean, I and Mr. Nixon both sit on the EFPPC, Charlie has been here a lot, you've asked questions, you have these opportunities, I just don't see that process changing. So, but, you know, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I can imagine that if we have a significant issue, that you're going to hear about it.
Can I just say that if that should even, if the scenario Dr. Hackett just described should play out, I actually don't think we would find out about it retroactively. I think that Charlie and the EFPPC would actually be proactive. And what I mean by that is, once we get to like 90% construction documents and we get reconciled cost estimates, if, and I want Charlie to weigh in if he disagrees, but Charlie and Peter Bradley and his team, who's our cost estimator, who's done a lot of work here in Winchester, the other independent cost estimator working directly for Hill, has also worked in Winchester, most recently on the McCall expansion project, with really good effect. By the way, numbers are very tight. If we get to something like 90% CDs, if we feel we have to, we'll have conversations around things like ad alternates, which is, okay, what are we not confident may come in on budget? Let's take that out of the project. Let's make it an ad alternate, not a deduct, but an ad alternate. And then if the numbers come in below budget, now we know, okay, yes, we're going to take menu item one, menu item two, and we're going to put it back into the project. And we can have those kinds of conversations and understand not only what the cost is of the alternate, but the impact on, you know, the operation of the building, if in fact it should impact net zero. This is actually how we got the shell space on VO. We actually, all that extra excavation, the three and a half classrooms at the lower level, was an ad alternate. We really wanted it, but we didn't want to jeopardize the project, you know, coming in on budget. Is that a fair thing to say, Charlie, about how we can sort of manage this as we get close, if we have concern about cost?
Yep, and I think it goes back to what Dr. Hackett said earlier, if there's any issue, it's not going to be somewhere in that arbitrary decision about scope, this can be cost, and that's the one thing that we can't control the construction bidding market. And if we have this sudden craziness around cost, that would be the one thing that would drive any kind of different decision making tree, but I don't expect that to happen.
And I think what you said, Mr. Hay, was most important was what came earlier that I said, and I think I might have gotten lost in some of the other questions, is that the building is designed to be net zero. So the choices you have made to this point in the project.
That's correct.
For PV, and that's where I was mentioning windows, because Mr. Hay did, PV, windows, all the design materials are pushing the project towards a net zero building. All of those choices that you have already made and already thought about are making this a net zero building. But it sounds like, Mr. Nixon, that if there were going to be choices that might affect that in any way, we'd know by fall of '23 is 90% completion documents, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was a presentation.
Yes, I mean, now that we have begun design development, and as Charlie said, he's finished up the architectural model, so his mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers are going to be able to take that model and take their concepts and move them forward. We can really start to like quantify and kind of measure some things. So up to this point, the sustainability consultant, Andelman and Leilak, who've done a lot of work with Charlie and his team, the work to date has been so schematic, it's not really, it's not measurable, but they can look at the building and they can look at like a written description of systems, and they say, okay, it's a three-story, 103,000 square foot building, it's in Winchester, it's at this latitude, it's oriented this way to the sun. And they have said with some confidence, I don't think I'm misstating it, that they feel that this is an attainable goal. But it's not measurable, because, you know, it's like, if, look, if this was in the 70s, this would be a napkin sketch, practically. So when we work with computers, things look very finished, they look done, and they're not. It's just the way it looks to us.
I'll say, I appreciate all the time we spent, this was not meant to be a controversial statement, I thought it was a very simple, you know.
Yeah, no, and I think it's a good opportunity for this board to have this conversation to also help try to make sure that when people are talking about it-
Right, everybody understands.
Yeah, that we have the working knowledge of, from experts about what does it mean and what are the factors and-
And what do we mean when we say net zero ready and design net zero?
Correct.
And things like that.
Right, right, so.
And for what it's worth, a widely accepted definition of net zero is, it's even on the project website, is an efficient designed project which on an annual basis generates clean renewable energy onsite in a quantity equal to or greater than the total consumed by the building. So that concept is on an annual basis, because you might, depending upon where the building is, your heating season or cooling season, you might not be net zero in December or January or July, but on an annual basis, when you average it out, you are.
And if we're looking at those metrics and we see we're not going to hit it in a given year, we'll shut school down, December through March, get through that new season.
Save the energy.
Save the energy, come in on target.
I was just going to say, as-
Just kidding.
I know you're kidding, but, I know you're kidding, but, I lost track of how many LEED Platinum buildings there are at UCLA. They're proud of the fact they have LEED Platinum buildings, they have a new one that's net zero. But the windows are wide open, the doors are wide open, there's a reason why it's net zero, it's because it's located in an incredible climate.
Southern California.
You know, it's Southern California. It'd be, Charlie would love to have had an opportunity to design that building, because, you know, you'd hit LEED Platinum in your sleep. So, you know, we have some challenges being in, you know, what we technically call a temperate climate in New England, and so it just throws new challenges at the design team.
And I'm not suggesting that we detach from the grid or anything like that, so, you know, whatever the common definition, if it's on an annualized basis or whatever, you know, if that's where the standards are, that's, you know, what I would shoot for.
Thank you, Mr. Hay, for indulging us in this conversation. I think it's an important one for this committee to be able to communicate better with other members of the community, so I appreciate you taking the time to work through it with us today.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
See you tomorrow, Charlie.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, we are going to move into our FY24 budget development update. I wanted to take a minute before we get started to just update this committee on some, about a meeting the Select Board had this weekend and our finance Subcommittee meeting as a lead in to our discussion about this. So on Saturday, January 7th, the Select Board held a Select Board workshop to begin reviewing the town budget as a committee. Myself and the Finance Committee Chairs were in attendance just as audience members for this meeting. At the meeting, the town discussed projected and increasing town costs that would continue to require the use of free cash or other funding sources to balance the budget in FY24 when considering operational costs, debt service, and pension and OPEB. While the Town Manager outlined a number of positions that she would like to also add to town employees in FY24, the Select Board seemed to have consensus around about four of those. They were looking at potentially adding an IT Director, a Treasurer, Financial Analyst, increasing the hours on a Health Inspector, and potentially also adding a part-time zoning enforcement officer. There was also a request from the Select Board Chair to the Town Manager to look at the organizational structure at Town Hall and see if there were any reorganization of employees there that was possible for cost saving and that also. So the Select Board is still early in their process, as we are, so they have not communicated any clear policy objectives to this board around their budgeting process yet. They are just starting to think about those things as well, that was their initial meeting. The Chair mentioned that they are also looking towards a Fall '23 or Winter '24 for a potential capital or and/or operating override. I would assume that as the last time we had a townwide capital and/or operating override, that a representative state of the town working group would be formed in a similar way, if they do choose to move forward with that plan, to be able to prepare properly for such an override. The Finance Committee has held several preliminary budget meetings, all attended by the Finance Committee Chairs and/or Education Subcommittee Members from the Finance Committee, and we too are still at that first look for School Committee on the FY24 budget, as you'll hear tonight. Tonight, we're going to look at a rollover budget, FY23 to '24. Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe will identify the areas that will be budget drivers for our operating budget moving forward, and as part of this process, we'll also look at current enrollment and how it's changed over the last several years. This process will hopefully provide some more clarity for School Committee Members and begin to refine our priorities and policy objectives for our FY24 budget as well as budgets in the coming years. And Dr. Hackett, would you like to take it from there?
Thank you, Colonel Chair. Yes, I would. And I believe Peter's with us, Andrew's with us as well.
Welcome.
There he is.
Hey, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening.
Peter.
So I'm going to, just quickly, not quickly, but just to kind of give you, I want to be really clear about what you're looking at and what you're not looking at. So what you are looking at right now in what we call a rollover summary, these are the cost centers that you are very familiar with in building your budget year over year. This budget simply takes everything we're doing now with all the people that we're doing it with, and rolls it into FY24 with adjustments made to the contracts that have been finalized, some assumptions about contracts that haven't been finalized. For example, we still have units D and E, hate to say that out loud, but we do have more negotiating to do with units D and E. It takes known increases, for example, in our transportation contract, which is a contract we are in, we know that contract's going up a little over $30,000 next year, that is built into here. And there has been some adjustments made in anticipation of some cost drivers around professional services, special education tuition's a different animal, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later as a separate driver, but it has done nothing more than that. So we've not gone in here and said, as the town has started to identify some positions, there are no identified positions in here. There are no adjustments made for enrollment, either up or down. We've made no staffing changes, we've made no adjustments, this is simply taking what we have now and throwing it into FY24. So does anyone have any questions on that? Because I felt like last year I did not do a good enough job getting that message clear as we were kind of going through the different budgets, and I don't want to make this mistake again. It's, to certain extent, to most people, I don't think to you, but to people in the community looking at this, this is kind of a useless budget. But what it tells us is, here's our starting point with no adjustments. Now, from this 4.92% increase, which is what you're looking at as a rollover budget, what are the things that, what are the adjustments we know we can make, should make? Positions we should add, things we should take out, adjustments that we know in terms of best estimates around costs such as special education, which this committee is well aware, and I believe the community is well aware, has been a tricky proposition the last couple of years through the pandemic, where we're still kind of experiencing some of the effects of that. But that's what this budget is. So if everyone's good with that, Peter, do you want to just kind of walk through, you know, what we're looking at?
To make sure everyone's good with that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could you just provide a little more detail? I guess I'll say, I thought you did a fine job last year when you explained that.
Thank you.
You beat yourself up. Could you just give us a little more detail, if possible, and if it's okay, if you can't right now, on what the professional services are, just so we can have a little more understanding?
Absolutely, and I'll have, Mr. Rowe, if you're ready to kind of walk down through that, and maybe you can touch on that.
Sure. I-
I wasn't clear on the question, but let me, let me do this, and then if I miss it, I'll come back to it. So just to quickly, are you on slide number four?
We're on the summary, rollover summary.
Yeah, slide four.
Yes, slide, slide four.
Slide number, great. So then what we've done here is we actually rolled up the elementary schools into one line. So what you see are eight lines of our normal budget, with the cost centers listed on the left-hand side. So that we really, we're showing them the eight different cost centers, beginning from central and then high school and middle, all the elementary, special education, athletics, technology, and pupil services. And what we're doing is we're comparing in the first box of numbers that's on the left-hand side with personnel and then other expenses and then totals, to the second boxed area, which is the projected FY '24, giving the same three areas. And then, as the superintendent said, we're, in both cases, where we list positions under the column actual and projected, you'll see that there are 636.8 positions in both years. So we haven't affected that. We've essentially rolled everyone forward. And the total is a growth of just under $3 million, 2.99, which is 4.9% growth. And as I think everyone really knows from the history of the school department appropriation in Winchester, most of that is personnel. In fact, 2.6 plus of that is made up of personnel costs moving forward to next year from this year. And the exceptions are actually noted under the box for FY '24, where we put in the transportation number, which is growing because we have it been in place for, and this is transportation for our regular service. We're not yet accommodating any changes that may come from the Lynchwood Partners, a growth of $30,450. And then additionally, again, as the superintendent pointed out, we've made a provision for what's primarily some professional service costs that we expect will grow in our special education services. So that's just a little over $300,000 in total for growth of expenses. So the real growth is in the cost of personnel and not in corporates, all cost of living adjustments from our agreements to date, as well as step costs, lane advancement, any longevity adjustments, and any other changes that have been already agreed to in units A and C, and a provision for any remaining personnel where decisions have been finalized, projected forward. So it's about 2.6 million plus in salaries and just over $300,000 in the expense side. So for growth of 4.9% is our projection.
And I think Mr. Brady was asking, could you kind of break down the professional services that increased a little bit? What, what does that encompass?
Well, it generally encompasses services where we would be contracting for professional assessments of, of students. It may be, it's really a range of any outside services we'd be contracting for in special education beyond our staffing in place. And it only, you know, varies every year depending really on programmatic need and on specific education plans of students. So we've seen that grow over the last couple of years, and we're going to be conservative, at least at this point, but we'll have to finalize that as we get closer to the end of the budget.
Can I ask Mr. Brady's question, then? Peter, maybe a little more pointedly, is the 284-550 the current FY '23 number with some arbitrary markup? Or is it based on something specific that we think we know about '24?
So the question is, what is the backup behind the 284-550? Does that represent known increases in certain services? Or is it kind of an adjustment based on? Okay.
Yeah, it's an adjustment based on, I'm looking at the pattern of the last couple of years and projecting what we think that would require.
And I would also, I think it's fair to say, Mr. Rowe, that we have been underbudgeted in professional services for the last couple of years too, correct?
Correct. And so this would attempt to adjust for that within the last couple of years, either through the IDEA grant or, or the ARR-RA grants, able to absorb some costs. But I think going into FY '24, we need to make sure that the general fund is able to absorb any cost that's going to happen there. And this, this still needs to be finalized. I'm working with Heather Gary in terms of the full range of services that we're going to be facing. So this number probably will change as we move through the month.
May I ask?
Move through the budget.
May I ask another question, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Peter, it's, out-of-district placements are not called out here as a sort of sub-line item, but to the extent they're incorporated in this 4.92, are you carrying an out-of-district placement number that equals what we have for '23? Is it a running three-year average? What, what can you tell us about your assumptions?
We do have a slide, we do have a slide on that, Peter. Do you want to go to it?
Yeah, why don't we do that? That's great.
Sorry, I'm not jumping ahead.
No, that's a good leading.
No, it's a good question. And so this is.
I just figured we might as well go to the slide.
This is a current budget.
We're off a couple of bucks on the FY '23 budget.
We are. We are off a couple bucks on the, and Mr. Rowe can talk about that and how, what the plan is to cover that. But the general fund is carrying 2, 2.5 million. As you know, those are the, the three major funding sources for special education tuition are the general fund, the IDEA, 240, and Circuit Breaker. So the total funds available, the total allocation in FY '23 is 4.7 million. Peter's been, has worked with, with Heather and doing the projection as of kind of the first quarter, it looks like we're going to be running about $257,000 in the hole. But I, as we went through this process last year, there were times in the year that we were running, we thought we were going to be more in the hole than we ended up being. So that number can change, but that's where we are effective right now. But as I understand it, as I understand, there are some rollover funds for coverage of that.
That's correct. And the other, to answer Mr. Nixon's question, yes, incorporated in the projection in the special education expense side of the full budget you were looking at. What we did was assume expenditure at this $5 million number, the 5 million, 14,000, that we were currently looking at in the first quarter as the number that was really the basic will for '23. So if we then, which would show us a structural problem for this year, that we hope to, the superintendent said, cover with some ARR-RA fund. But if we then roll into the next slide, which is the projection for '24.
We're on it.
What you'll see is that we're projecting growth for Circuit Breaker to $1,816. So if we hold the general fund at the same level of 2.585, expect an IDEA grant of about $840,000, which we think is reasonable. It's very small growth from this year. But then, $1,816 in Circuit Breaker. And we know that that number is solid because Winchester has very wisely utilized the process of booking Circuit Breaker funds a year ahead.
Right.
Based on experience from a prior year. So in fact, we are this year receiving $1,816 in Circuit Breaker funds in order to budget them for next year. So that means those three numbers together will be a number of 5.241 million. Excuse me. So what you see is, is that number's about 200,000 over what we incorporated in the projection that we showed you. So we have a little flexibility there. The issue is that we've received information from the State Rate Study Commission to anticipate tuition costs that could be approved as high as a 14% increase. If that were to happen, our total cost would be more than the 5.7 million dollar range. So that still leaves us with a very big gap. So one of the reasons we haven't, on the roll-forward number, incorporated any additional growth for Circuit Breaker or special tuition, is because we need to do more work in looking at the items within our cost as well as try to figure out how real and how probable this 14% increase will be.
And do we know, and I'm sorry, the last question on this very sort of granular topic. Do we know, do we know that all of the out-of-district placement centers that we use in Winchester are applying for a rate increase, which they are eligible to do? Because these rate increases are only eligible every few years, right? Every three or four years or something along those lines? So, yeah, go ahead.
They don't have a choice.
That's kind of some of the information we need to know. And this is, this is a cost increase generally there. Everybody's generally allowed a, if you will, a standard rate increase annually, separate from anything they may do in terms of, it's not called restructuring. There's a term for, they can change their programs and services and go cyclically to get that approved. But annually, the Rate Study Commission does rule on what a private school is allowed to increase their, their cost by. And we know for the last decade that those numbers have generally been in the 2%, 2.5% range.
Right.
So this is wildly out of that range and something that we need to get more information on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Rowe. So Andrew has been, and Peter, myself, to a certain extent, have been working on this kind of a, this discussion around Lynch Transportation, and what we want to present to you tonight is a little bit more detail than we presented the Finance Subcommittee. But this is, this is our preliminary look of transporting Lynch students to Parkers in FY '24. So what I want to be clear about a few things. One, we are making the assumption, because how we want to start this discussion is, you know, if we provided the maximum service, which is above and beyond what we even currently provide, where we, or, and/or we just assume that every student is going to, Lynch student is going to be on a bus coming to Parkers next year. What does that look like? What does that mean? And what does that cost? Understanding that there are multiple options as we go through this, and these are just the beginning options, which will have sub-options, which will have conversations with the community about other ways to get at the goal of making sure that students who need transportation are, have access to transportation to, to Parkers. And on top of that, our goal, and we've talked about this before, to the extent that we can limit the amount of vehicular traffic and drop-off, parental drop-off, the better off we are on this site, given how tight this site is. So there, I just want to be clear, this is like the outside, upper-level assumption in terms of service and potential costs at this point. And Andrew, I'll, if you want to walk through these bullets, or, I think you're still with us.
Andrew's still?
Yep.
Okay. Look at him, still at the high school.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, he's still at the high school.
Delicious.
Little jealous.
Dr. Hackett, you're on the, the first slide here?
I'm on the current ridership, yes.
Slide seven.
Seven. Thank you.
So the, at Comraser Village, about 120 students, that's one bus in the morning, two in the afternoon, for those, after-school programs. And we receive about 80,000 feeds for that, that building there.
Can I interrupt with a question already? I have, I have to. So, so I want to be clear, do you have a breakdown, Andrew, of the, the morning versus the afternoon bus? In other words, are these 120 individual kids? Or are these 120 rides? Are there some kids that are counting twice because they're on in the morning and they're on in the afternoon? And that, the question just gets at understanding what our capacity is? Because these buses, you know, have a capacity of, what, 76 or 80-ish seats on a bus? So what, what does the 120 mean, knowing we have one bus in the morning and two in the afternoon?
Yes, that's 120 students overall, and then it kind of breaks out, yeah, that varies in the afternoon. It's less rigid. In the morning, it's probably around 30 students.
Okay, thank you.
In the afternoon, Andrew, both of those buses are pretty much maxed out, aren't they?
Yeah, one, the one that goes to the after-school program is maxed out. And the others may be about almost 50% of the time, I think. Yeah, so as Dr. Hackett was saying, we kind of, preliminary kind of have two options. Option A, kind of looking at those existing tiers, how do we expand, kind of the bus capabilities within those existing tiers. And then option B kind of breaks out, adding new tiers, specific to Lynch, and how do we incorporate that into the larger, the schedule? So I think it'd be easier, we jump to the next slide, Dr. Hackett?
Yep.
And so this slide here, it kind of lays out both those options. Option A, B1, B2, where we kind of look at adding buses to the existing tier. So right now, we run two tiers, elementary and secondary. And so if we had to add those buses, that'd be, for Lynch specifically, it'd be adding about six buses to that already to, to the cost of almost $600,000. And then kind of option two of this would be, how do we incorporate Lynch maybe into the existing capacity of other elementary schools, which we're still working on right now, that that would be kind of using the existing Lynch buses and looking for any kind of overlapping routes based on where those students are placed around the district. And then option B here goes into those new tiers. So B1 would be a new tier before the current elementary tier. So it's kind of small there, but the Lynch bus would probably arrive at the school around 7:25 AM. School would start at 7:30 and dismissal at 1:40. The earliest kind of student pickup time we'd be looking for is 7:00 AM. We'd have almost, we'd have 25 minutes there, about maximum of four, kind of bus journey. And B2, B2 would take that same approach, would have put it on the opposite side. So we run current elementary, current high school, and then run the Lynch tier. And see if you'll get about 8:55 AM arrival with 9:00 AM start, 3:10, oh, it says AM, it should be PM dismissal. But now one in particular, it has some conflict with the existing high school schedules, so we might have to look at that. There's also further conflict with the afternoon athletics transportation. And then the third option under B is kind of look at all the tiers overall and how we shift them to accommodate maybe a later arrival at Lynch if we upgrade that new tier. So for instance, if we run Lynch maybe start at 7:45, and then the elementary move up to 8:25, the secondary 8:45, and then we kind of shift the same on the pickup side. But also have broad impacts on athletics and transportation and the four after-school childcare programs too. Yeah, Dr. Hackett?
So, and I just want to use a, an analogy that Mr. Nixon used earlier. You know, when, when we see the design of Lynch and we see the really clean-looking buildings in the images, it looks much more done than it is. I would apply that same thinking to this. So this looks really done, or it looks pretty detailed out. These are, we are, you know, this right now is our, is our best effort to bring to you conceptually what some of the options are. And of course, you can see, you know, you could easily see option A1 going A1 dot 1, A1 dot 2, A dot, right? So there's so many things that can come out of this. What I think's important for the committee to, to think about and contemplate is, there really aren't a lot of ways around these two overarching options. We're either going to leverage existing tiers, or we're going to have to create a new tier. One of the things that I think is really important, and you all know, because you've received plenty of emails along with me and others this year about buses arriving late, not being able to provide enough drivers. We have gone this entire year without really full capacity of drivers, just with what we're trying to do with general education.
And especially.
And, and special education. And we just, just, not too long ago, received word. And we just, just, not too long ago, received word that another driver was able to be put on because they passed the license exam, which is really part of the logjam that happens for all transportation companies around this issue. And that has provided relief for our language-based program and students getting to VO in a more timely way. We were able to, to expand the capacity. So my, my real immediate worry on, again, I have to think, we have to provide, we by law have to provide for more than two miles away from Parkhurst, right? So I want to start with the idea that we have, where we provide for everybody. And then whittle back down to, okay, well, what does that mean? And do we get to a point where we just say, we know we have to provide the option of transportation to all students more than two miles, which is our current practice, and then we charge a fee for students who are within that? That's a discussion for a later time. But what I don't want to do is get into the planning of this and say, we're going to go with option A, knowing that we're not sure we can add existing buses to the current tier. So if we were comfortable, normally, if we were comfortable, we'd do it now. If we had all of a sudden more ridership, more people, more kids wanted to ride the bus, you know, and we, and we had the, we had the ability and the company had the capacity to throw another driver or another bus on the road, I'd feel more comfortable saying that, you know, that makes, that is the least disruptive, although it is more expensive, but that's the least disruptive option. Obviously, all of this also depends on what is the reality of how many students will be riding a bus, which we don't have that information yet, which is a lot of work that we need to do, and to the best, to the extent that we can, engaging with the community, engaging with parents to try to say, you know, would, would you, are you planning on taking the bus? I think we're going to have a higher ridership, because I think this school is difficult to get to. We are going the opposite direction, probably for some working parents as to where they're trying to hit 93. So they've got to come all the way over here and then back again, or however they decide to get there. I, I would imagine, from a convenience standpoint and from people getting to work, we would probably see increased ridership, but I don't know. So that's, that's our starting point. Andrew, did I miss anything?
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, that's very preliminary at this point. I think there's still a lot of work to do, but, yeah, I think they, or if you could start at least, at that point.
Mr. Brady, I see your hand.
I, I appreciate kind of having these all laid out for us as an opening idea. I think as we go forward, it would be great to have the information of how many students are within the two miles and how many are without the two miles, because I think that would factor in a lot, just as we start to think about it going forward.
Andrew, is the estimate 255 students who are outside of two miles or more?
Yeah, I think it's 233.
233.
Out of?
More than two miles, two or more miles away from the school.
Right, what's the total at Lynch?
About half.
That's Lynch.
That's half.
Half.
Half-ish. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's half.
Just making sure I was remembering.
Order of magnitude.
I was remembering. I would also, about, options about creating new tiers, have we talked to Kidsborough about childcare?
We're nowhere near that, yet.
Okay. I just, childcare was mentioned, so I wasn't sure if that was just a presumption that it was going to affect it, or if we've actually spoken to.
We have not.
Okay.
And, you know, and rec, WinRec has indicated that they're not going to provide the programming here, because they don't, we don't have, the building is not big enough and there's not enough room. So as we also think about this, wherever we land, we also need to think about what is the, what kind of supervision and what's, that do we need to provide for students who are arriving early?
Right.
Here. And, you know, that will be a cost to us that we'll need to work through.
But that is a cost, totally true, but that is a cost that we could weigh against the cost of an added bus.
Right.
So if, if there is an opportunity to make this building open earlier and provide a structured, safe drop-off opportunity earlier, there could be a, you know, personnel cost to us as a district, but that might be less than the transportation. And what I like about that is it's also less, in my mind, it's less risky, right? A driver can get sick, you know, the snow can come and mess up the road or whatever, but, you know, if you've got your employees here and the lights are on and the heat's on, you know, we're ready for kids.
Find the coverage, right.
Dr. Hackett, just to clarify what you just said, so am I enter, am I to understand that when Lynch is here at Parkhurst, WinRec will no longer be providing the after-school program?
They will not provide it here. They will provide it at Mystic. So students who are, who have always been after-school specifically, at Lynch, at Lynch, will be at Mystic. That program will be Mystic. So we will be transporting students from here to Mystic to the after-school program.
And so we will not be offering any after-school program here?
Here.
We could offer Kidsborough here.
Well, right, so.
That was kind of my question, is that, I guess that's another variable.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it would be in our best interest to get kids off the site, but, because it just isn't really conducive to the kinds of program, depending on the number of kids. And that's, you know, that's another piece that we'll just need to figure out.
Yeah, I'm not sure Mystic is a much larger building.
But they can, they can access all the classrooms. So part of the issue for us here would be that the kids would be accessing classrooms that teachers have set up, and that can cause issues.
Okay.
As opposed to, right now, Lynch has the gymnasium, and the cafeterias, they have large spaces.
Okay.
So, my recollection is that the eight buses would, would, if we added eight buses, would roughly double our bus fleet for elementary? Is that right? For more than double it?
Are we talking about adding it to the option A? Andrew, is eight, we currently run nine buses, correct?
At the elementary level, we're running, we're running eight right now.
We're running eight.
Right.
And it would take eight to, to cover all of Lynch within existing tier?
Correct, yeah.
And presumably four to do, just the ones beyond the two miles, if you chose to do that?
Yes, essentially.
And some people would pay.
Essentially, right.
But then you'd have the other 230 people driving up to the school, or whatever portion don't pay.
Right. And then, you know, I mean, some of you have already mentioned ideas to me, and we've also been thinking about this, is there, you know, they're group stops, are there places we can drop kids? Are there places we can pick kids up and drop them, and then they can walk here? Or can parents drop kids at Ambrose and then they walk here? I mean, so there's a lot of those kinds of things that we can think about, but we also be, have to be cognizant of, I mean, it's, it, we heard a lot, I mean, Ambrose is tight. I mean, that's, so we just have to really think about how do we stagger this? And we also have to account for normal parent and human behavior around all of this stuff. And, you know, we're always know we're going to have people who are coming in at the last minute. We always know that we have people who are dropping off too early. So in the range of possibilities, we just need to make sure primarily that we're doing this in a safe way and providing access.
What do you want from us about this today, Dr. Hackett? Besides just letting us know you've taken an initial look at it?
Well, I think, I think primarily, I think you need to be thinking about how we currently do it, is we provide free transportation for students two or more miles away. Is that, and then we have a fee base for students who choose to ride the bus who are within two miles. I think you need to be thinking about that. Is that, is you going to, are we going to continue that structure? I do think there's going to be more ridership, you know, and then I think that as we think about this, for example, if we change start times and have to make adjustments to the schedule, that's clearly, you know, subject to contract negotiations with the, with WBA as well. There, if anyone from WBA is watching this meeting or listening to this meeting, they're seeing this for the first time, because, you know.
We're seeing it for the first time.
Candidly, yeah, right. So, so there's a lot of work that has to happen around this, and I, and I, but, and I think the biggest piece is, is really trying to get a, a good handle on what the real ridership will look like. And again, my, my biggest concern with option A is getting to a point where we need another bus and we can't get it on the route, because they, people, they just don't have the drivers, so.
Are you ready to make a recommendation to us on this?
No. No, not even close.
Okay.
Do we reach out and ask, well, I guess we don't know what the incoming class is, but do we reach out to current Lynch families and ask?
So that's our next step, is working with Chrissy at, at Lynch and trying to find ways to access, you know, and maybe putting a survey out and trying to, but trying to put a survey out that we can target the people, so we know that families who have answered, families who haven't answered, and just try to do some data collection around it.
And then, not knowing our bus contract, if we decided we wanted more buses and we know that our current service provider can't provide them, do we then have the opportunity to have a separate contract with another company for those buses? Or is that not allowed based on our current contract?
We've asked the question, our understanding at this time is that we would then need to go out for the entire contract.
Okay. Seems silly, but, okay.
Yeah, that's one more logistic question, is on the buses. You know, I know we talked about having drop-off for people perhaps below the school. Would the buses come up to the loop? And is there room for eight buses, you know, here or there to line up?
Yeah, I mean, you know, yes, is the short answer.
They come up to a loop and they just go through, drop one off, and the next one?
Right, right. So they wouldn't come up to this loop, they're going to come up to the new loop that's in the parking lot that's on the field.
Okay.
So there's plenty of queue space for them to come in and out of there.
Oh, right, because that's a big one, yeah.
Right, right.
I have a couple of comments. Can I throw you for a loop? Can you pull up Google Maps for a moment and just project it?
Just kill me.
Because you know what I'm going to say.
You can tell them, no.
So.
Can I know?
Yeah. It seems to, I wanted to be sure I understood.
Well, before you pull up Google Maps, let's hear what the question is.
No, I'd like you to pull up Google Maps.
Well, because he might have a better map to answer your question, is I guess my point, Mr. Nixon. What are we looking at?
I was talking about already.
Yeah. I would like to see Parkhurst in relationship to Ambrose. And if you, there should be a tile you can click on, there, you have the lower left, and you can sort of see the aerial, see that little button in the lower left? There you go. And then if you sort of zoom in to where we are, you should be able to get an image sort of like, right, like this, it shows the schools. I wanted to be sure, while Dr. Hackett is zooming in on that, so did I hear right, Andrew, that you feel like under option A1, we would be adding three morning buses and three afternoon buses? Is that right? Net?
Yes, or net, based on what we're at, it would be adding up to 104, have eight total. That's like a worst-case scenario.
But that, I presume that would be three in the morning, three in the afternoon?
Six in the morning, six in the afternoon, so dedicated to Lynch only.
Yeah, and then plus two, so the eight total, AM, PM, if we had, you know.
Sometimes we talk about buses, sometimes we talk about buses, we're really talking about runs. So you're, you're, so you're seeing 12 runs?
Yeah, in total, so eight, oh, so there'd be eight runs in the morning, eight runs in the afternoon.
Okay.
This would make where, transporting everyone.
Yeah, then that's everyone, right. So it would be, how many, Andrew, if we did the 230?
Oh, yeah, yes, I guess it would be about half of that, yeah. Three, should be, yeah.
Can I ask you, Dr. Hackett, just zoom in a little bit, so we can, we can see both those school sites? Thank you. So I think one of the, Dr. Hackett has touched on this before, that on, on the one hand, you have this sort of legal obligation, right? So we have, we're obligated to offer transportation, they don't have to take it, but we're obligated to offer it. But I feel like Dr. Hackett has also previously just sort of recognized, we sit on a really tight site here, and it would be in our interest operationally if more kids were being bused, right? So there's the financial impact of having to provide it, but if everybody was coming on a bus, that would actually make things easy, assuming we could figure out how to pay for a bus. And I wonder, I agree with, I think it was the chair who, just a moment ago, or, sorry, Ms. Bullen essay was talking about, you know, reaching out to Lynch parents. I feel like it would be helpful to do that soon, but to be able to provide these options in a way that they can sort of understand. And one of those, I think one of the options that we need to be clear about is, for the parent who says, well, I'm not sure I really want to do the bus, particularly in light of COVID and, you know, kids packed on a bus, there may be some families who say, I'm more comfortable, I don't, I don't, I just don't want to do that. If Dr. Hackett would rather than not be getting dropped off right here at the base of the school, where could they go? And so we were familiar with this concept of, you know, the walking bus. We have, I think, two crossing guards at Lynch today? Is that right?
I believe so.
I think two. And so when Lynch goes offline for abatement and demolition, we have a couple of crossing guards. I, I wanted just us to look at this image for a moment. I wanted to make the observation that, and I, I'm, I see in the afternoon there are Ambrose parents who park along Westland, so I get it. But that stretch of Westland from High Street to like Oneida, Oneida, is equivalent to the queuing area that we have, for instance, at Morocco, which Seamus and I are more familiar with. That's three blocks from this school. And so I, I wonder if it's helpful for administration to sort of think about, okay, for families for whom it's important that they drop their kids off, if we would really not wish for them to drop them off here, well, they could early, like to that earlier point, right? If we have the early window, that's great. But I think what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Hackett, is there would be a hard stop, right? So we don't want a crush of cars showing up at a certain point.
We would say there's a hard stop.
But there's no such thing as a hard stop.
So what might that alternative be? And when I look at the, when I literally look at the plan, I look at the streets, I see opportunities to place a couple of crossing guards and have, you know, a walking bus. I wonder if, if, could we offer for parents that, you know, Westland Avenue from High Street to Seneca, or something like that, is a drop-off for Parkhurst? And we've got crossing guards there to keep the kids safe, and they're walked up to the school, and that's where they go at the end of the day. I mean, I'm just suggesting that is, something like that is an option. Because we're talking about a lot of kids, and even if it's 20, 30% of families say, I'm not interested in the bus, that's still a lot of cars.
Sure.
And so I'm not saying it should be this, but I think if you're going to talk to the Lynch community, having some idea about what would be workable for you is important for them to know, is they're sort of thinking about, well, is this something I'm really interested in or not?
And, and, and that's a great point. I think that there, I'm sure Lynch parents are going to have other ideas that we're not going to think of. This reminds me of the conversation of, of outdoor classrooms and tents during COVID.
Yeah.
You know, we can, that's a great option when the weather is nice, and we've been pretty fortunate in having some mild years so far, although there's been, you know, some really down-wrenching. We just need to make sure that in the event that we have a week's worth of bad weather, that that walking bus has another option, and we've got to figure out what that is.
Yeah.
And that may just be, you're bringing them to Parkhurst, because it's more of a convenience for us in a way, to have them drop them there, so that we're not getting all the traffic, car traffic up at Parkhurst, although it's a convenience for them too, because then they're not dealing with getting in and out of the neighborhood. But, yeah, I mean, I think there's, everything's on the table. These are the outside, are, or maxed-out options, assuming all kids, and then we just have to get whittled down to, get better information, get ideas from others, and, and we'll come back to you.
And the, the comment that I wanted to make is that I, I think it would be helpful for, for me, I think it would be helpful for the school committee, if, as you're developing this list, if, if the school committee can suggest to you what some metrics might be for evaluating these, you could almost create a grid similar to what you've started. I mean, that, and those could be obviously cost impact, because some are going to be more costly than others. There's operational impact. I think another option, another thing to evaluate is what I'm calling certainty or confidence factor. I mean, is, is this a plan that you're confident is going to work? Is it, is it really dependent on a number of, of things? And then is there a plan that's sort of flexible and adaptable? So here, I'm thinking about River Street, which will come online while we're in the midst of construction. Cambridge Street, although it's a VO project, will open, it's big, and there will be students there, and how many of those students are going to want to get it? So in other words, during the school year, or during Lynch construction, if we have some influx of students, does the plan fall apart?
Right.
Right? How resilient is the plan?
Right.
So I, those are, in my mind, are some criteria. If, if you develop, you know, a 1.1 and a 1, a 1.1 and a 1.2 and a 1.3, if you're able to then come back to us and say, well, here's how management is evaluating these, could be helpful for us, because I'm sensitive to the cost component, but it seems to me there's other elements that are literally just as important, including like confidence that it's going to work.
Right.
I would suggest, Mr. Nixon, that at a higher level, this committee also, before we even get to that point, probably also need to decide what our, our priorities around it, around these options are. Our, is our priority to be able to bus every Lynch student? Is our priority the ability to only bus students two miles away? Because those are going to form the foundation of the things that you're going to at the next step. So we need, I think, to help Dr. Hackett and form some of these things, we need to decide sort of what our policies around that are. Also, and the decisions we want to make around those, that, those important priorities.
I think that's well said, but the first point you made, I, you made, I could almost throw back to Dr. Hackett, because if, when you talk about our priorities, is it busing all students or just those beyond the two miles? Again, that's the operational piece, because if Dr. Hackett feels like it's going to be so difficult that the real preference is to get as many kids here in a bus as possible, then it's not, and it is, what we're really talking about is incentivizing it. I mean, are we just gonna offer free busing for everybody, for the Lynch community? Which, you know, then introduces other conversations about equity in other parts of town where folks may be struggling, but.
Yeah.
I hear you a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, part of this, is when I just think about this, it's not, it's not, um, we are so fortunate that, that we're gonna have a brand new Lynch building, and I know the Lynch community is feeling that, and I know how grateful they are, but it, you know, this situation is also not by their choosing, right? They didn't, they didn't buy a house at Lynch knowing that they were gonna be sending their kids to Parker. So there's an inconvenience here that they didn't plan on, that I think we just need to think about in our discussions around, you know, equity, to, to your point, there is a little bit of an equity difference here, uh, given that this is kind of unplanned for, for families. So, so we'll take all that into consideration, um, you know, and just again, a reminder that if we call the bus company tomorrow and said we need two more buses on the, on the existing tier, they would not be able to do it. They would laugh, but they would not be able to do it.
Because I think it's also important before you go, before we go to the Lynch community, to be really clear what options we're giving them to. Because to look at something like this, that is very preliminary, and I appreciate the first look at it, that it's not, that's not where I'm going with this.
Start somewhere.
But, right, um, but like, I just think of myself as a parent, and if you're gonna tell me busing's free, my use of the bus and my interest in the bus is gonna be different than if you're gonna tell me the bus is a thousand dollars a year.
Right.
So I think we, that's why I'm saying, I think, Mr. Nixon, we need to be really clear what our priority as a committee is and what we're willing to absorb is costs. And we need to think hard about that, because that's gonna make a difference about use and about walking buses or people dropping kids off. Mr. Brady, sorry.
No, no, I, I appreciate your point. I'm, I'm hoping with that, once we have some very concrete options that, you know, I, I would love to propose that we have a special meeting where we can hear from the Lynch community about it, just on that issue.
Yeah.
Because I would want, you know, I wanna hear not just how many people want what, but, you know, the actuality of how this is gonna impact some people, because if ten percent of the people are very adversely impacted by having to have their kids be done with school at one forty, or having their kids be done with school at three ten, I think that is important.
Absolutely.
So I, I, I look forward to us being able to do that, to get that feedback.
And just, uh, one sort of related question, uh, is there an opportunity for fourth and fifth graders to, Lynch ones, to be, have an option to go into some of the empty seats that we might have in some of our other schools, um, to, to reduce the number of students that have to come here?
Yeah, so this, interesting you asked that question, I'm starting.
Question, I just.
Essentially, are there options for students in fourth and fifth grade who would not be entering the new Lynch when it's completed to go to other schools?
Oh, yeah.
Really part of the open, um, enrollment.
Open enrollment.
And we did play around with that last year, um, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a great thought. I mean, um, you know, and it's another good community conversation with those parents specifically, because I'm imagining that when kids get to fifth grade and they've been together since potentially pre-K or kindergarten, you know, the fifth grade is the last year of the elementary school, s, many of them are gonna want to be with their, their peers. So we can't guarantee the fifth grade is all gonna go to one school because we don't have capacity. But the extent that people might want to make that decision independently, um, we need to consider and allow for that, and, and Policy Sub is meeting on the eighteenth. Um, and we'll be talking about, um, that issue around kind of open, um, open enrollment, um, and how we want to implement that. Also being cognizant of the fact that we can't have so many kids go out of the lower grades that we open Lynch and there's no one there.
Crickets.
They're all, they're all somewhere else, so.
I didn't understand the last point you made.
Well, we just gotta be careful, because, you know.
You started a school.
Parent, yeah, when you tell a parent that, uh, we'll let you go, your child go to school here for one or two years, guess what happens in year three when,
No, I understood that.
Understandably, they've made friends.
That, that's why I asked about fourth and fifth grade specifically.
Yes, no, I think that's a, that's a.
And, and in addition to the open enrollment, I mean, if there's, I don't know if there's enough physical space, but, you know, conceivably you could move a teacher and a classroom if you had a, an empty room in a building.
It's a great segue to the next slide.
Okay.
And, and just to say one more thing, just to make a point, um, that just, I think we need to remember also, this is one time cost for two years.
Right.
Right? So as we think about these costs, we just need to also remember that we've just got to find this money for two years. And, um, there may be some options around that as well.
Can I say, uh, one other thing, um, on the, um, the chair's suggestion of deciding what our priorities are up front, it might be helpful to get the, the Lynch community input, you know, if we had multiple options, you know, would you ride a bus if it were free? Would you ride a bus if it were a thousand dollars? Would you, you know, so we can be informed with that data?
Right, right.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback and input, and we will continue the work. Andrew and Peter, I think you're, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Up to you. I'll tell you what, I'll end the meeting for you so that you don't have a choice.
It's the way to do it.
See you tomorrow. All right, so along the budget conversation, obviously, one of the, um, big factors for any school system, us included, is the, is enrollment. And, um, we know that we've had these discussions last year, you had in the year before. We know that we've, um, enrollment has, uh, has been difficult to pin down in many ways for many school systems and, you know, from the standpoint of what was the true impact of the pandemic and what is the true impact of statewide natural decline in birth rate and move in. So what you're looking at right now is, um, just to kind of bring us back to where we've been, um, and, and kind of what we're kind of looking at moving forward. Again, these, and I'll explain it more clearly, but this, this is a roll forward look too. So there have been no adjustments as you look at that, those far two right columns in SY twenty four, school year twenty four. There are no adjustments to staffing at all. So let's go from the left to the right, you can see we have cases.
Or students, Dr. Hackett. You just rolled the twenty-three students forward to twenty-four.
I did, right, but I made no adjustments to staffing. So the staffing that are there are the same staffing we currently have. And I'll try to be more clear. So in the orange columns, uh, that is school year October tw, uh, first enrollment, that's, so that was the actual enrollment. You can see what those enrollment numbers look like for a total K through five of eighteen ninety-three. Number of sections in school year twenty-two, um, you can see that across those grade levels. And then you can see the average class size across those grade levels. Understanding, as you know, that just because it's fifteen point five six doesn't, in, 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 in the aggregate, doesn't mean it's fifteen point five six at every school. That number could be nineteen or twenty in one school, and it could be lower in another school. This is obviously an average. In school year twenty-three, as we built the budget, we projected the enrollment numbers that you see. So we, we threw three hundred in at kindergarten because we truly hadn't really no idea where it was gonna land. And then we, uh, made the projections for the remainder grades, as you can see down that column. That was mainly a roll forward from the previous year, but we did make some adjustments, um, particularly in grade one, thinking that, you know, we do see an influx historically of kids coming into grade one who have been in a private place kindergarten. And then you can see the number of sections that were budgeted, budgeted. So those sections that were budgeted were in the approved budget, town meeting approved budget, so we were at a hundred and seven. So from school year twenty-two to school year twenty-three, we dropped three elementary sections in the budget process. As we went through this, this spring and into the summer, it was just a ton of work done, uh, by Dr. Alan Emma, uh, by Pam Gerard, really, uh, combing through and trying to get a real solid understanding of what were the services, specialized services, special education services that were gonna be needed for students going into school year twenty-three, because there had been just so much, so much activity around special education from referrals to actual identifications to, um, students needing services, that we really wanted to make sure that we had as best handle on it as we can. And what we, what came to the conclusion was, we didn't have enough special education staffing to meet the needs of the students that had been placed, or even, uh, their programs had changed because of, of, uh, gaps in learning through the pandemic. So, um, when we went from the budgeted sections, looked at the actual enrollments as those started to play out over the course of the spring and the summer, we made the decision through attrition to reduce another four elementary sections. So while we budgeted for a hundred and seven elementary sections, and that's what's in this current budget, we dropped the elementary sections to a hundred and three over the course of the summer, prior to the beginning of the year, using those, and that was done through attrition, using those resources to add additional sped positions that we did not have to come back to the school committee and ask for additional funding for. So we accommodated the, uh, the additional need with existing resources in a way that made sure that we were meeting our obligation and our responsibility to provide students who identified needs the services that, um, that were required. So, um, you can see, interestingly, that did not have a huge impact on the overall class size average, going from in SY twenty-two, that third orange column of seventeen point two-two to seventeen point nine-five. It did up a little bit, um, in particular grade levels, and we do have a couple of schools that, um, have a couple of grade levels and sections that are a little higher, but we don't have anybody that's over twenty-two or twenty-three. So we still, um, are enjoying very favorable class sizes. Mr. Brady?
Could you just give us a little detail on what happened with third grade, where we thought we were gonna have eighteen sections, and then all of a sudden we had twenty? For the actual?
So.
Got more kids back? We went from three hundred and forty-three at projected enrollment to three fifty-six actual.
Well, we projected three eleven.
Third grade.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
We went from three, so there's thirteen more kids, and then we ended up with two more sections.
That is a good question.
Just like two schools all of a sudden had like six or seven, and so you had to do it because they were smaller schools.
No, that's, that's a good question. That number may not be right.
Okay.
Let me double check the number.
It just, it's the one that jumps out.
Yeah, you're right.
I saw that, I saw that too.
Suddenly, third graders are descending upon, I mean, it could happen.
It can happen, but I don't think that was the case.
It's, it is ten more kids from the actual SY twenty-two.
Let me double check the number.
If it was in the right places.
I'll try not to fix it right now, if we could not, um, yeah, so with that, and again, thank you, Mr. Brady, for pointing that out, and that, we'll double check the number. But as we, as we look forward, uh, to, uh, next school year, we've just basically rolled these numbers forward, with the exception of kindergarten, we, we've added, um, about ten percent, or, you know, around thirty additional students, just anticipating that there may be growth, um, not knowing. And we've also added about the same amount of students to grade one, um, taking the two fifty-one actual kindergarten and going to two eighty-five for the projected, because there's no question that there is always a, a pattern of more students coming into first grade. So with those two assumptions, and then just kind of rolling forward, as you can see, grade, you know, grade one to grade two, three oh five to three oh five, the rest of the numbers, and assuming the same number of sections, understanding that that not be, may not be right, these would be what the class sizes look like in the aggregate, if in fact those numbers held. I will say that we were pretty close, um, in terms of what we projected and where we landed. We projected eight sixty, eighteen sixty-seven, and we landed at eighteen forty-nine, um, from one year to the next, which, um, you know, if I was, if I was betting, I would put some money on us to be close again this year. Um, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
So is there a reason why you're showing a decrease in enrollment of a class of thirty-one? That would be our fourth graders this year. So they're at, so you're carrying, like, today's first graders, you're saying three oh five, next year's second grade. The two seventy-two goes to two seventy-two. Everything tracks diagonally, but we're.
That might be the answer to the grade three question too, Mr. Nixon, so that may not be right.
Okay.
Yeah, because I carried that across.
We have three hundred and thirty-seven fourth graders, but we're saying three twenty, we're saying it goes down.
Yep, so that, we'll have to check that number too.
And so, so, so thank you for letting me interrupt you. Can I just make an observation?
Absolutely.
So, um, two things happened, in my opinion, that made these numbers go down. We matriculated the largest class, which was those fifth graders at three fifty-one, right? They fall off the grid.
Right.
So they're, they've moved on to the middle school. And then we, you know, we, we estimated three hundred kindergartners, but we didn't get that, we got two fifty-one.
Yep.
So we moved a bolus of kids off the grid and we got fewer coming in. However, in the class of thirty, there was a one point two percent growth in those numbers year over year. In the class of thirty-one, it was a one point eight percent growth year over year. In the class of thirty-two, it was three point one. In the class of thirty-three, they grew by three point eight percent. In the class of thirty-four.
Mr. Nixon, could you refer to them as they are up here?
So I'm go, I'm going from bottom to top, Seamus.
Just say what grade they're in, this year or next year.
Right, so, so fifth grade, there's a one point two percent growth from year over year, and then, so I'm going next, so younger and younger, right? One point two, one point eight, three point one, three point eight, and we had an eight point nine percent increase in that group of kids, um, year over year. And, and that's going from, that's going from two sixty-two to, sorry, from two eighty to three oh five. So, so I'm just saying, once the kids get here, we've got growth. And it's interesting to me, because I didn't see that until I did the math, but there's actually larger and larger growth the younger you go. Which, and we've always said for years, the hardest part about this is really figuring out how many kindergartners you're gonna get, right? That's like the black magic. So, you know, we estimated three hundred, we didn't get that, and clearly COVID impacted everything. But once the kids are here, I see growth in these classes year over year. And I had no idea it was gonna be as high as nearly nine percent.
So as part of the budget conversation, I can make the general statement that, um, we, we would likely be recommending reduction in some elementary sections going in FY twenty-four, based on the roll forward and based on individual schools and the distribution of these students across the school. So, uh, obviously, they're not equally distributed across each school, and, uh, we know right now what the numbers look like at each school. So as we go through the next steps of this process, uh, we are, we're gonna need to make some reductions to elementary sections. So we're gonna have class sizes in some cases of twelve or thirteen in certain locations, which, you know, obviously is not good for instruction, um, and also just not, from a resource standpoint, the best use of, um, our resources when we have additional needs elsewhere.
But are you prepared to say that, or do you want to go back and revisit those numbers?
I, I know, I am prepared to say what I just said. I'm not prepared to say where it's, where it would be.
Okay. Because, I mean, the reason I'm asking is if that three thirty, I mean, if you just roll that three thirty-seven forward, we pick up, you know, nine kids, it's nine kids.
It's based on the individual schools though.
But, but just carrying those numbers forward would then assume there's zero growth in those classes.
Correct.
But we've just seen growth in each of those classes in the previous school year, and in some instances, it's as much as nine percent.
I just don't think we're gonna see that kind of growth in individual classes year over year.
And not enough growth that it's really affected the average class size.
And we also had a phenomenon of kids returning from pri, private placements last year that I don't think we're gonna see again going into the elementary level with kids who are at the upper grade levels.
Because we know where the kids came from. It's not that, you know, they weren't, they weren't all moving into Winchester suddenly.
So we'll come back to you with making sure the data are correct, um, you know, and it's gonna be a calculation. I mean, you know, we do know we have some potential influx with the residential housing, um, uh, projects that are going on right now. And we're gonna have to kind of play a little bit of a, not as, I don't think, as much of a role, there's no indication that we can see that we're gonna see an influx of students at the, at the elementary level going into next year, unless something changes dramatically.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because I, I think what I, I heard you talking about was the orange to the blue. And I think what I heard Mr. Nixon talking about was the blue to the green. I, I'm just wondering if, if we, if we know that there's some seasonality in the growth rates between these, if, if we might want to look at the green and apply that, uh, eight point nine, three point eight, three point one, one point eight, one point two growth rate between the blue and the green, not where they came from in the past, but, but where we think they'll be next year.
I don't, yeah, well, so it's, that would not be a best practice in terms of projecting enrollment.
Okay.
Because you're looking at a one-year set of data that's based on coming out of a pandemic where you were, in the year prior to, you were both remote and you were hybrid, um, and there's nothing in the birth data, and there's nothing within any other, other places. And there's nothing in the birth data, and there's nothing within any other places around us that are, they're seeing the same decline in enrollment. So, you know, if we had three or four years worth of data, that's what we would use that ratio and say, okay, this is generally what we think we can expect. So I think we're going to be going into another year where we're going to have to kind of hedge our bets, understanding that, you know, in the worst-case scenario, we have to add a position in August, which we don't want to do, but that could be the scenario that we're in.
Okay. My question was just whether you guys were both talking about the same set of, it sounded like one of you was talking about one thing, one was talking about the other, but it's...
I was still in the mindset of trying to figure out why that number wasn't right while he was doing the math. So I half listened to what he was saying. And when I figured that out, then I'm going to probably reach back to him. And I do understand, conceptually, I understand what he's...
Oh, yeah, I'm only looking last year to this year. I'm not looking this year sort of next.
Oh, okay.
Class sizes of twelve are very nice. I can't let you get away with that.
I...
Very nice. That's what people pay, like, fifty thousand a year to send their kids to private schools.
Yes, they are.
To Mr. Hopcroft's point.
Point taken, Mr. Brady.
To Mr. Hopcroft's...
If our headmaster, well, go ahead.
To Mr. Hopcroft's point about River Street, we, you know, there's about one hundred and forty-seven units there. We've estimated to the MSBA between eighty-five to ninety-five K-12 students. And between thirty and thirty-five would be coming to Lynch. And there's a roof on that building now, I think, so they're getting close. And, you know, we've got other estimates for Cambridge Street is twenty to thirty K-five students. That's ninety-six units, a little further behind, but coming along.
And I think as we think about that for the next two years, we need to keep in mind that they're not going to Lynch, right? They're either going to come to Parkhurst, or they're going to, we're going to put them somewhere else because, and likely it would be somewhere else because we don't have the, right, right? So that's another piece of the equation that ties into the question around the open enrollment. What are we going to do and how do we place students?
And the Select Board ended their meeting with a verbal approval of the Converse Street proposal last night. So they want to wait...
Has to go through CONCOMs.
They want to get some documents in front of them, but they're almost to the finish line there, too. That's multi-story.
Maybe we could drop the fourth and fifth grade modulars off at the other schools.
Okay, so at the risk of missing another great idea...
I'm going to move by so long, Dr. Hackett.
At the risk of cutting off our creativity, I would just want to just show you this final slide, and this is kind of more straightforward. But what you're seeing here is, you know, what we know to be true, is that we do have a climbing or we are regaining ground at the secondary level. So just to go all the way back to the heydays of eighteen nineteen, when we didn't have to think about vaccinations and masks, and then in nineteen twenty, we were living it up. You know, you can see those total enrollments. And if you look at the high school right now, you know, we are above where we were in school year twenty-one, twenty-two. And so we are way above where we were in eighteen nineteen. And we definitely, this, I wasn't here, but you know you definitely had a blip at the secondary level in school year nineteen twenty. And that was, I think, significant, probably significantly impacted by the pandemic in twenty twenty-one. Some, you know, and then we, that's where we were in twenty-one, twenty-two. But then, as you, as we kind of move forward, we're seeing some recovery. You know, the middle school will be gaining, likely gaining some additional enrollment over the next couple of years, too, as the upper grade levels, the elementary level are bigger. So that's where we are. We've gained fifty-nine kids over what we budgeted, still pretty close. But, you know, the enrollments there are pretty steady. So as we think about staffing and program, you know, we're not in a situation where we have an explosion in enrollment growth that we need to accommodate for through staffing. Now, we have changes in student needs, but we don't have that. And that is it for this evening.
Any questions or additional comments on the last slide from anyone? Okay, thank you very much, and thank you. Do you have another slide? That's the last slide for this one?
That was it, yeah.
Okay.
Just pulling the agenda back up.
Thank you. So we will continue to dig further into the budget. We definitely will need our meeting next Tuesday night on the seventeenth for Dr. Hackett to be able to bring some more information back to us about some of the things we spoke about this evening. Definitely for committee members, if you have any questions about anything that we spoke about this evening, if you could get your questions to Dr. Hackett as soon as possible so that we can plan for an effective meeting next Tuesday, that would be great. And that is our only anticipated agenda item for next meeting at this time would be the budget. If anybody else has anything else time-sensitive from any of your committees that you sit on that you think we need to be addressing next Tuesday, please let me know. And Chris, you look like you've got something to say.
I have two things. Very appreciative for all of the enthusiasm around the Lynch project and the vote on Saturday. As I think we all know, a common question was, so what about Morocco? And in our community conversations, we've been reminding them about that Morocco life extension plan and our previous commitment to kind of come up with a plan for Morocco between twenty twenty-eight to twenty thirty. I am somewhat, I was hurt, but still somewhat motivated by the Chair of FinCom, who said on the floor of town meeting, nobody uses a map that's five years old. Why should we use a master plan that's five years old? So there's a lot of good stuff in there, but as Dr. Hackett has said, you know, we kind of need to do a reset on enrollment. So I will suggest to the committee that sometime soon, I'd like us to talk about what our next steps are on Morocco. Not so much about an RFP for designing a new building, but to maybe do some high-level conceptual work, looking at the building we have, thinking about enrollment, taking into account Project Ten, which is that last flood mitigation project, which has been fully funded, and to look at some alternatives, you know, whether that is Leonard Field, is it something else? I think it's just important for us to keep making some progress, keep Morocco in a low boil so that we don't forget it. Particularly to your comments at the beginning of the meeting, if the Select Board are talking about potentially a debt exclusion override and an operating override, how could Morocco fit into that? And then with respect to your comments about the Saturday meeting, I was surprised that the meeting happened on a Saturday, so there was no Wind Cam coverage. I'm bummed about that. But I do understand, I think you were saying there might be an override in the spring or possibly in the fall. Typically have operating overrides in the spring. And as we did last time, to facilitate that, we kind of come up with two different budgets. You may remember, we called it the austerity budget, you know, what happens if the override fails? An operating override in the fall would be interesting since we don't really take up the budget until the spring at town meeting. But I'm glad to know the Select Board are talking about the potential for an operating override. But of course, the schools would be a big, big part of that. So I'm eager to know more about the timing and what they're thinking. At the close of last night's Select Board meeting, Mr. Mucci made a comment that town staff are working to develop what he called a balanced budget for FY twenty-four that draws on no free cash. And he added that he knew that the school committee was meeting tonight and discussing this with Dr. Hackett. So I am curious to know, putting you on the spot somewhat, was there any conversation about an FY twenty-four school budget that would draw on no free cash? Any sort of expectations made by the Select Board along those lines?
I can speak to conversations with, with town manager and assistant town manager that they have been charged, as I understand it, with developing a budget that is a balanced budget without the use of free cash. And I think within that charge, there is, I don't think, there is also the interest in having that applied to the school department as they look as to what that would mean. So as my, and I wasn't at the Saturday session, we were asked to provide, I was asked to provide a range for the next few fiscal years in terms of growth. And for next year, I gave a range of three point seven, I think to four point two, four point one, four point two, four one. And I believe that the discussion on Saturday was, in taking that, if you, if we, they took that three point seven and whatever the increase would be projected for the townside budget, and combined those, there would be a need for a reduction of a million dollars to get to a balanced budget, if that balanced budget means balancing without using any free cash. So in looking at whatever the share of the school department would be, conversation around, you know, some kind of sixty, six thirty split or some kind of split, you know, regardless, is a million dollars, one point one to one point two million, I believe, we would be a, we would be a portion of that. If that portion is five or six hundred thousand dollars, then let's say it's six hundred thousand dollars, then from three point seven, that effectively would bring us down to about a two point five percent budget. To get to balance with no free cash.
Go ahead, sorry.
So I would, so I would just add, at the end of the meeting, at the very end of the meeting...
Saturday.
Yes, Mr. Mucci himself requested that budget. So there was no vote by the Select Board or no ask for consensus, but he said that his requests at the end of the meeting were for a budget that did not use free cash, a budget that had three point seven, and a budget that had a four point one for the schools.
Okay, I appreciate that. That was going to be my follow-up question because I was listening carefully in your remarks, and I know you mentioned that some new initiatives on the town side, there's interest in perhaps an IT director, right, a financial analyst, part-time enforcement for zoning. And so those are, those are new initiatives, right? Those are adding to the budget, not cutting back, and I'm trying to sort of reconcile these two things.
So I'm trying to be appreciative of the fact that it was their first conversation around this, too. And, you know, there was also that request of looking at staff at town hall and reorganization. So I think they, I don't, I think we need to keep moving forward with our budgeting process and let them keep moving forward. It's good to know what each other are doing, but I don't think at this point, until we have any policy direction or firm policy direction or a vote or request from the Select Board as a whole for us to do any particular thing, that there's a lot of effort, a lot of usefulness in the effort of us following what they're doing. Does that make sense?
It does.
It's good to know what they're doing, but we need to keep moving forward with what we need to do, too.
Yeah, and for me, I was mostly watching last night because I was trying to catch up and follow whatever may have been discussed on Saturday, because I wasn't there.
Right.
So thank you for indulging me. Would you like a motion to move to executive session?
I would, for a purpose, too.
For the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel? Because in an open meeting, it may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and we would only reconvene in public for the purposes of adjournment?
Second. All in favor? A roll call. Hopcroft, Mr. Brady, Ms. Bonnais, Mr. Nixon, myself, all good.
I was going to propose we move it to next week, but I figured that would go for like a last balloon. I didn't even bother.
But we know that you were thinking it.
I'm hoping that it will be...
Would I have had your vote?
You might have had my vote.